You're outside?
Yeah.
Julian Wolf, okay. But he's here.
He'll come back after public.
You want to do item seven before we do go to six?
Yes.
Because there's a kid named Julian Wolf who's going to be the student member of the youth commission.
We can do all the appointments.
Yeah, okay. So when we do the opening prayer, we'll switch it around. All right, I'll go to you, right? Just say, can we do appointments before the public comment? Thanks. Jean Proud, okay, thank you. All right, got you. All right. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, tell him that we're going to bump him up and do him soon. So I don't want him to wait. This could take about an hour and a half.
So once again, if you're not in a seat, we need you to move outside of the room like do see three people standing here. We're going to invite everybody that wants to speak. We're going to invite you to come in and we're going to just trade places.
I think listening to everything everyone else has to say.
Thank you all very much.
Guys, ready? All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. The date is July seventh, two thousand twenty-five. The time is now seven fourteen. Before we begin our regularly scheduled council meeting, we do have a public hearing on ordinance eleven ninety-five. Ordinance eleven ninety-five was read into the record on first reading and adopted on first reading at the previous council meeting. Ordinance eleven ninety-five concerning amending chapter twenty-five boards, committees, commissions pertaining to the Arts Commission. This is an ordinance by the Marion City Council, Haverhill Grace, Maryland, excuse me, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, Local Government Article of the Interneted Code of Maryland, in sections three and sections thirty-four, of the Haverhill Grace City Charter to amend sections of chapter twenty-five boards, committees, commissions pertaining to the Arts Commission. Is anybody here this evening to speak to ordinance eleven ninety-five on a public hearing? Any questions among council members? All right. Without any comments from the public or the council, I now close public hearing on ordinance eleven ninety-five. The time is seven fifteen. Okay. Evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's July seventh, two thousand twenty-five. The time is now seven fifteen. I call to order a meeting of Haverhill Grace Mayor and City Council. I'll call the roll. Council President Ringsacker.
Here.
House Mayor Boyer.
Here.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Here.
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Ellis.
Here.
Great. Everybody please join for pledge allegiance and the opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I could kindly ask everybody to remain standing as it gives me great pleasure to invite Ermgard Brown up for the opening prayer this evening. I'm glad you're here, Mrs. Brown. Good to see you.
Thank you so much. For those of you who know me or don't know me, I had open heart surgery five weeks ago tomorrow. I am only here by the grace of God. And I tell you that I can't help but use my I am only here by the grace of God, and I tell you that I can't help but use my experience as a metaphor. And I'll probably be doing that for the next several weeks. And so I come to you with an open heart, to you and to my God, that we might take this moment to pray and ask for divine guidance in all that we do. And so, Holy Spirit, do come into this august body. I ask that you would be present, that you would speak, and that you would also teach us to listen. And I ask that there would be an abundance of love and grace so that we may all come to the one desire that we have, to live well in our community and to give thanks for all that we do have. And we remember those who are less fortunate than we are, particularly those who are in Texas and other places in these United States in which pain and sorrow have become a daily diet. Instead, we are grateful for what we do have here and just ask that you continue to be present in all things. Amen.
Ern Guards, really great to see you. Happy to have you among us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please be seated.
Mr. Mayor, in the experience, in the interest of time, because of all the speakers we have this evening, we're gonna switch around items six and seven. So we'll be doing the appointments first and then citizen comments because we have a youth member that needs to get home.
Counsel, any objection to the switch in the agenda?
No objection.
All right. Okay, we're gonna do the appointments, item seven before item six. Sounds good. Okay, we're gonna go to item number five, approval amendments. City Council meeting minutes of June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Boger, second by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. City Council meeting minutes of June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five are approved. Six are in affirmative. City Council special meeting minutes of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Boger. Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor. I will be abstaining from the vote as I was not there.
All right, let the record note that the council president will be abstaining. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. City Council special meeting minutes of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five carry five. Is there an affirmative? City Council special meeting closed session minutes of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion to approve City Council special meeting closed session minutes from June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five are approved. Five is there an affirmative? We're gonna go to item seven, appointments. Council President, you want to take these one at a time or how do you want to do it?
So I guess with Councilmember Boger, sorry, yeah. So Boger can do his first, I guess, and then Councilmember Boyer can do all of hers and then do the others. Just one vote. It's on calendar, yes.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Boger.
So Mayor Martin, directors, citizens with us in the audience, I move to appoint I'd move to appoint Mr. John Keaton to the Arts Commission.
Second.
Wait a minute, you want to vote on these all at once, right?
Yeah.
So it's more like an introduction from Councilmember Boger, correct? Okay, so it's just an introduction, so.
I withdraw my second.
Okay. So Councilmember Boger is introducing Mr. John Keaton to the Arts Commission. Councilmember Boyer?
I move to introduce or to appoint to the Cultural Exchange Commission the following people: Wanda Boger, Moore Burton, Morgan Jones, Chris Stathis, and Deborah Stathis.
Thank you. Councilmember Boger.
Mayor, Council, I move to reappoint Ms. Jean Johnson to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellis.
I'd like to move to appoint Julian Wolf to the Youth Commission.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellis.
I second all of the above.
And what we'll do is I'll do this. Do I have a motion for the consent of all?
I make a motion for a consent to agree to all of them in one consent.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. So I have a motion by Councilmember Shenegas, seconded by the Council President. This is for the consent of all these appointments to these commissions. And any questions or comments?
I'll let you go first. Go ahead.
I am so pleased to have John Keaton join the Arts Commission. He's a very talented artist in the community, and he's also helping out with our new Luckiest Light gallery and studio, and he's going to be a wonderful addition to our Arts Commission.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shenegas. Any other questions or comments?
I'll just a comment too. So in regard to Mr. John Keaton, he's also a retired US, US Air Force veteran as well, staple in the community and incredible artist. If you get a chance to go down to the gallery at two twenty and check out some of his work and also the lights, the light, the enlightenment, do so and check that out. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Yes.
I just want to explain what the consent calendar is. We're using this method now because there are eight people on the agenda that are being appointed or reappointed. If we took the time to do each one individually, it would be here for an hour. So what we do is as long as council consents, there's not going to be any objection to any of the people on there. We vote on them as one whole versus, you know, eight people taking an extra hour of your time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Any other questions or comments? Sir?
Yeah, I'd like to recognize Julian Wolf and, and the excitement for a youth member to be on the Youth Commission. It's very, it's very hard for us to decide what's best for the youth and what they would like without having their input. So having a youth member on the Youth Commission is very valuable, and I'm excited that he's stepped up to join.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellis. Councilmember Jones.
Yes, just having left as liaison for Historic Preservation Commission, I'm excited to see Jean Johnson continue in that role. I think she's been an excellent leader, and I'm excited that she's agreed to stay on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jones. Any further questions or comments? Councilmember Boyer?
I'm just gonna take advantage of this opportunity since we have so many people here. If you're interested in serving on a committee or a commission, we always need people to step up and get involved. Havant Grace only runs the way that we are, and we can only have amazing things because of our amazing volunteers. So if you know of anybody who's on this list, please thank them for their service. And if you're interested in serving, please go to the city website and you can see what the opportunities are. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Boyer. Is that it? Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Shenegas, seconded by the Council President. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion to appoint the officer said people to the commissions are approved. Six are in affirmative. Is Mr. Is Mr. John Keaton in the audience? Could you just please stand real quick? We recognize, we thank you for being willing to serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Now, the other ones were reappointments, but however, we do have tonight the Youth Commission student member, Julian Wolf. Julian here? I think it might have been out in the audience or out in the hallway. Is he coming? I know he's here. I just want to make sure he's here. We able to get a hold of him? I think you're coming there. Come on up here, Julian. Put that podium if you don't mind. Right that podium. So real quick, so we're all talking about you while you weren't here, and so I just want to read these. In order to be a student member of the Youth Commission, you have to have two letters of recommendation. But I wanted to read you these letters of recommendation into the record. This one came from your teacher, Ms. Fisher, at Havant Grace Middle School. I am pleased to write this letter of recommendation for Julian Wolf. I've had the pleasure of working with Julian for a long time as a student, as well as a National Junior Honor Society volunteer for various events. Julian has consistently demonstrated professionalism, that dedication, hard work to whatever he obligates himself to accomplish. Julian is a highly motivating, reliable individual who approaches every challenge with a positive attitude and a strong work ethic. Julian demonstrates determination to accomplish every task he focuses on. He tries to rectify issues whether asking for help from a teacher or parent or finding alternative resources to fix the issue. Julian is respectful to his peers and everyone else surrounding him. I am confident that Julian will continue to make valuable contributions wherever he goes, and I highly recommend him as a member of the Youth Commission. Should you have any questions or need further information, do not hesitate to contact me. That came from your teacher, Ms. Fisher. And finally, to whom it may concern, I'm writing in full support of Julian Wolf's application to serve on the Havant Grace Youth Commission. Recently had the chance to learn about Julian and the way he's already given back through the National Junior Honor Society, as well as his volunteer work at the Todd Park Food Forest, the Shoreline Pollinator Garden, and Riverside Events. It's clear he cares deeply about his community and is eager to contribute in meaningful ways. I believe youth voices are essential to the work that is done on the Youth Commission. When young people have a seat at the table, we create space for ideas, experiences, and perspectives that adults may miss. Julian's drive to help others and interests in civic involvement make him a great fit for the commission. I'm so very excited that Julian has stepped up once again to get involved. I strongly support his appointment and look forward to seeing his impact. And that was written by Havant Grace City Councilmember Ellis. So real quick. Stay there. Now, for this commission, we don't swear. People in. I want to shake your hand and welcome you. Thank you very much for serving. Good recommendation, Council President.
Jim Ring Sager. Council President. Congratulations.
All right, Julian, thank you very much. So we appreciate you being here tonight. I think a lot of people are gonna be speaking, so we moved you up ahead of the speaker so you won't have to wait all night. All right, we'll see you on Youth Commission, all right? Thank you, Mom and Dad. Okay, that puts us back to item number six, which is comments from citizens. This is the part of this evening's agenda. If you're here to speak on an agenda item, now's the time to do so. If you're here to speak on other matter of city business, now's the time to do so as well. So I know we have a handful of comments. Normally what we do, if you pre-fill out a form to speak, whether here or online, we call on those forms first. We probably have over fifteen forms filled out. When the forms are done, anyone still welcome to speak? All you gotta do is raise your hand, be recognized. We need to limit comments to three minutes each. And I'm asking everybody this evening, because I know there's people here talking on different topics. Just ask that everybody be respectful of everyone's point of view. That's all we ask. So one on top is Mr. Jared Newey.
So we're gonna flip-flop because I know Katie's on the roster too, and she needs to go first.
Okay, we'll have both your forms, so I'll just put you both together, okay?
Appreciate that.
All right.
Appreciate you guys. All right, thank you for that. My name is Katie Now. I'm with the State Theater of Havant Grace. Jared and I have run, been running it for years since it opened. And I just wanted to say that the mayor and the city's official argument against the state theater in this situation is based on two points: drawn-out timelines and the matter of public safety. The packets we prep for council tonight directly address both pieces of that argument. One of the first things that you will see when you open it is the IBC code for public gathering spaces. This is the same code that's referenced on the city's website that states that public gathering areas under three hundred individuals in capacity do not require fire sprinkler systems. This reinforces things that we have said publicly, that in addition to the pool systems, emergency lighting, the direct line into the fire department should there be an emergency, there is commercially standard fire safety protocols at the state. There's another piece in there that highlights some of the email exchanges between Jared and Chris Ritchie, wherein Chris was very helpful in helping us understand what was actually needed to finish this project. That had been a long contested issue. What that shows is that we were not aware that we would have the financial burden to cover the cost of the water meter that was one of the final pieces of the sprinkler install until September twenty twenty, I'm sorry, September twenty twenty-four. The meter itself was not delivered until January twenty twenty-five, and when it arrived, we learned that it was lacking a key feature that was not included in that meter, but would cost us an additional twenty thousand dollars above what the original estimate was. This is just an example of one of the, what we've referred to as moving goalposts, could be explained by just confusion on what is a large project, but that's something that's extended this timeline. I do want to circle back to the matter of public safety, however. Because if this were truly a matter of protecting the public and a matter of public safety, then we would be having a much more rigorous discussion on how to use the city budget to support the police in terms of talent and logistics to support the events in Havant Grace that draw thousands of people and create for more dire circumstances if not handled correctly. We would have a robust economic development plan with the budget and legislative priorities to attract businesses, developers, and business owners to maintain businesses at code, so something like this confusion and the strife it's caused would not happen again. If we cared about public safety, there would be more programming supported, endorsed by the city and its partners in the private sector that appealed to people who were over ten and below fifty. But as it currently stands, there's so little for our youth to do that it heightens their likelihood of getting drawn into something that directly contradicts their own safety. This isn't about public safety. This is a battle of political will. And what I'm here to say is that the state theater over the last five years has hosted over six hundred events, brought in tens of thousands of attendees each year, and pours hundreds of thousands of dollars into the local economy each year from our audiences going to restaurants, staying overnight, and supporting local shops in the area. This is the will of the community, and this is what we're asking you to reconsider with a three-month extension tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Jared, welcome.
Hello. Well, good evening, everybody. I'm glad this ended up exactly how I thought this was gonna end up three weeks ago. All right, let's save everybody a little bit of time. We're asking for a three-month extension. As Katie said, we got dropped this bomb when we did, and it's in writing with, with Chris. We got dropped this bomb that we had to come up with this cash, going back to the script. We were made aware of this responsibility for funding when we were basically given this closure notice on you guys from the seventeenth. Okay, with two weeks' notice. Real quick, I had a conversation with somebody earlier that I want to reference. Has anybody had a contractor that you've called that you've been able to do anything in two weeks? Okay, cool. I hear no yeses. All right, in five days, we raised almost, not almost, we've raised twenty thousand dollars, guys. This is the money that is needed to complete this work. And all of these people are here to tell you this, okay? Here's the options that we have here. You can uphold the order, keep us shut down, all right? The funds are coming in, so within three months from now, the work will be done, we'll reopen, la di da da, we go back to that. The problem is, is that you guys have already cost us rentals that have had to cancel because of this. You guys have already cost us more money in revenue generating stuff because of this. And the thing is, is that all of this is about money. It's about us making money, staying open, and continuing to drive this thing forward, okay? Right now, I'm here instead of at Beyonce, okay? I was supposed to be working tonight, and I'm here instead of that, all right? Because I gotta be here to talk about this crap, all right? So you guys have already penalized us enough. It's cost us thousands at this point with the short notice cancellation. There's option two. You let us reopen, you do not disrupt the musical that literally goes up in two weeks. They were supposed to be building a set in our theater tonight, and at the end of the day... And at the end of the day, they're sitting right there, not building a set. We are literally not a fire hazard. There's a million people here that have never felt threatened in this place. And at the end of the day, my daughter has grown up in this place. And for anybody to sit there and say to... Like, to say that I would put my daughter at risk, they're insane, okay? I would literally kill for my kid. And I think every other parent here would do the same damn thing, all right? Back to the script, sorry. All right. Basically... Sorry, got way off script there. Basically, talking about Chuck and all them and the partner that we have there. The other promoting partners we have: Chris, Pam. I think Marcus is here, Lord knows somewhere. These are all brand-new co-op members that are trying to program their stuff. Shut up. Sorry, yelling at the buzzer. At the end of the day, these people need two to three months of programming stuff. They need to be able to schedule their shows. And at this point, like, we're basically screwing all these people that have literally killing themselves trying to bring artists, entertainment into this town. We want this done as much as everybody else does, all right? So, here's the thing. We've got families that are literally having to cancel and move birthday parties for twenty kids just playing on the dance floor, all right? And here's the thing. We want it back open because we want to hold the Save the State events at our space, in our home, not watching the video at the Star Center. Just give us three months. We will get this done. We are at the finish line, and we know where the goalposts are.
I'd like to call up Mr. Joshua Berg. Good evening and welcome, sir. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Joshua Berg, 556 Franklin Street.
Welcome.
And I am here also in support of the state theater. Now, you guys have in front of you all the logistics for the state theater. I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about what the state theater is and what it represents. Because for me, the state theater represents home. It represents a place in Haverty Grace that caters to thousands of people that do not have a place to gather in Harford County at large. They come from Baltimore. They come all over to this town. This business is bringing in so many people. It has created a legacy of its own. Jared didn't start out to be a community leader in this space and to represent an underserviced populace of people, but he has achieved that just by the sheer will of wanting to have the space for the community to gather. This is a side project for this man. This man brings in thousands of people every single month to this town that would otherwise not know we exist. They have a space that they have created that is its home, you know? I work in large and general. I am a cemetery person. I work at a cemetery. I see death every single day. And it causes me to take a look at that and really see what it means to leave a legacy behind, right? We're not just talking about a business that needs sprinklers. We're talking about a place that really brings community to Haverty Grace. These guys have created and have built something really special, something that doesn't exist at the other two theaters that are here in Haverty Grace. They have built something that is of its own thing. He didn't set out to lead all of these people here. He's not wanting to be here fighting all of this right now, but he has the call. He was called to do this. This is something that is bigger than just Jared and Katie and the state. This is something that everybody in this area has been asking for. This brings in lots of money to the town. And might I mention that there already is struggling businesses on Main Street? There are spaces that are empty sitting there. There is construction that is going on. And throughout all of this construction that is going on, they have continued to bring in business, business that brings to town money and taxes and helps support every single person that is here to listen, talk, and tell you guys what this space means to them. It's more than just the state theater. It's a community center of sorts. It's a place where we all get together. And I ask that you guys give them that three-month extension so they can do the work, because they're in code. They're inside of code right now at two-hundred-and-ninety-nine. So, I'd like... I'd ask for you to give them that three-month extension. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call forward Mr. John Close Savage. Good evening, Mr. Close Savage. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Good evening, sir. My name is John Close Savage. I own 129131 North Washington Street, Washington Street Books in Haverty Grace.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm sorry I'm not here talking on the theater tonight, although I support their desires to continue. I'm here on a little different thing. I am speaking here because I was brought to my attention this last week that there's a discussion in the works about forming a committee to possibly close the North Washington Street to vehicle traffic. This is a great concern to us and something that we personally and our business are completely against. We've been in business for thirty-three years. Our location and our experience has been that it is essential for a customer to be able to drive by our business, to discover us, and also to be able to park nearby to purchase from our store. Being able to do both is a major part of why we have survived the thirty-three years. I spoke to a customer this weekend that talked about the fact that they fell in love with Haverty Grace because they drove by. They saw the stores that they loved, and they literally pulled over and parked and said, "We love this town." And they ended up buying a place and living here. So, their whole point to me was, we wouldn't have experienced that if we looked up the street and had to walk up to the corner. And we saw this here in the last few months when they closed off portions of the street to driving, and you could only walk up the sidewalk. You look up the street and you try to decide whether you really wanted to go up there because you didn't know what was up there. And so, the parking and the thruway is essentially important to us. In addition to that, we've been under construction now for ten months, starting with the city cutting down the streets last September and dealing with all the digging up and closing of the streets. In our case, they hit the gas line, they hit the water line, and they hit the gas shut-off lines. These were all separate incidents. One of them, the gas, the first time was twelve hours that we had to stand by while they tried to fix this. We've gone from essentially sixty-one parking spaces down to forty-two. And I think everyone in North Washington Street is looking forward to having the street back open and having parking available to our customers. As one can imagine, this has been a tough time for all the businesses on Washington Street trying to survive. And we don't want to see the street closed off to vehicle traffic. And we don't want to lose the parking spaces that we have left. So, again, we'd like to reiterate that we're against any thoughts or proposals or committees that would talk about closing the street to both vehicle or traffic and to the fact that people can go up and down it and see what they'd like to buy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call forward Beth Baker. Good evening, Ms. Baker. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Beth Baker. I live at 402 North Stokes Street here in town for twenty-nine years.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about a different topic as well. This is about the danger that is occurring on North Stokes Street, primarily in the Franklin Street to Stokes Street intersection. The importance of this issue is that there is an increase of pedestrian traffic and cars for all of the events. And I'm noticing as a homeowner that cars are going down the road the wrong way. They're speeding down the road the wrong way. There's also concern about what is going to happen to Stokes Street when the bridge, Amtrak Bridge, is going to be refigured. How is that going to work? And also, it's just a matter of public safety. The evidence that I have brought tonight to make changes is that, again, vehicles are going down the road the wrong way. There's also an inconsistency of the one-way signs, the height of all of the signs. And I've done a comprehensive research on that. I do have a PowerPoint that I'd love to email to you with pictures to prove my point. The signs should be five to seven feet tall. And there is a major inconsistency in all of the one-way signs from Otsego to Revolution in that area that goes one way. There's also a lack of wrong-way sign at every intersection. There's about four one-way signs where there are multiple intersections that do not have these one-way signs. We have had an accident at Franklin and Stokes on December ninth of two thousand and twenty-three where two people were taken to the hospital, and there was a parked vehicle that was damaged and totaled. And so was the vehicle that these two people were driving in due to a person going down the road the wrong way. For myself, I've nearly been hit as a pedestrian just getting items out of my own vehicle and also driving down Stokes Street the correct way and having someone coming towards me in the opposite direction. What have I done about this? I have talked to the police for almost twenty-nine years to let them know that there is a constant problem. I've worked with several reverends, pastors over at the Presbyterian Church to let them know that their members cannot drive in from Franklin and come down Stokes in the wrong direction. That issue has improved, but it's not completely fixed at this time. So, this is the information I'm bringing you today. I'd like to send you the PowerPoint that has the pictures that show that there are signs that are even just four feet tall and some that are almost eight feet tall as the inconsistency. I'd like to have that fixed. Also, we'd like to have something placed on the ground as a sign saying, "Wrong way," okay?
So, you said you have a PowerPoint to show me?
I do.
Could you... Adam, do you have your card on you?
Okay.
If you could send it to Adam, we'll make sure the council gets it as well.
Yes.
We'd be happy to take a look at it and all the evidence that you have. So, Stokes and Franklin?
Stokes and Franklin is the main problem, but the entire road from Revolution to Otsego is a major problem. But all of these signs, the height, they're all at different levels.
Okay. Well, that's actually something that is a concern of us because we're definitely trying to audit all of our signs and get rid of the ones that are no longer valid, replace ones that are rusty and old. I mean, just we're trying to do some sign cleaning up, and that's something we want to take a look at.
Yes, there's signs with even bushes and stuff in front of them. You can't even see it.
All right. We'll be very happy to take a look at it. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Ma'am, can you also, when you send the PowerPoint and everything, put all your notes? And I'll get it from Adam, and we'll bring this up at the Street and Traffic Safety Meeting, which should be held on the twenty-fifth of August. I say that not... And I'm not a number-some, we're sure of we're meeting on August. But we should have it the fourth... We always have it the fourth Monday of the month at six p.m. here at City Hall, okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Baker. Call forward Chuck Hamrick. Good evening, Mr. Hamrick. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. My name is Chuck Hamrick, 801 Bear Creek Drive in Forestville, Maryland.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Martin, councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak. As I stated, I'm Chuck Hamrick. I'm here representing Riverstone Theater Company, a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit. I'm here as a board member of that company. I'm also the director of its current production, Putnam County Spelling Bee. Personal note, I am a State of Maryland employee for the lottery and happen to serve the Haverty Grace community at large as well. My reason for being here today is to address the closure of the state theater. I have volunteered, performed in, and had private rentals of all facilities within Haverty Grace for different arts projects, including the Star Center Opera House and the state theater. Riverstone has contracted with the state theater for our upcoming production, which was due to open on the eighteenth of July and run for two weekends. That would mean that we would have our tech week starting this coming Sunday. As Jared mentioned previously, we would be building our sets right now. This closure that has happened and has blindsided us as a company and many of the community will cause irreversible damage to our new theater company. Riverstone was established in two thousand and twenty-four. It's a brand-new company. We took a year to raise funds. Those funds cover things like show expenses, the rights to do a show, sets, props, costumes, rental fees, marketing time, insurance, tickets. I'm sure you guys understand all of that. Most importantly, we have a cast of twelve individuals, a production team of six to eight that have been working on this show for months and have just really poured their sweat and tears into this production, and it is ready to go. And unfortunately, we now have nowhere to do that show. The state theater and Jared and Katie have been nothing but exceptional to our new company. I've known them both for quite an extensive period of time. They have been nothing but professional, accommodating, encouraging, large leaders of the arts community within Haverty Grace. I've had many opportunities to volunteer and help them out. I've had many opportunities to go to events and have always been, quite honestly, enjoyed everything that I've done. First Fridays, they open their doors, just things that other companies aren't doing. I'm here to humbly ask for the city council to make a timely decision to allow not only an extension, but to understand the parameters of... Our production would have probably less than two hundred people in the space. I would say maybe only a hundred people, depending on ticket sales. You're all welcome to come if we get an opportunity to do the show. But my point is, is that I think that there would be no danger. I would love for us to be able to get the opportunity to perform our show at the state theater. I am here to ask for that humbly. And to be honest with you, I believe that it would be in the best interest of the city of Haverty Grace to do that. Thank you for your time. I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Mr. Hamrick. I'd like to call forward Virginia Durham. Good evening, Ms. Durham. Welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Virginia Durham. I live at 2812 Beckham Drive in Edgewood Road. I'm here for the state. I've been coming there since after two thousand and twenty. I had a major surgery. I couldn't go places. I felt comfortable and safe there. I have six grandchildren. Every one of my grandchildren have been to the theater. They have birthday parties. We do wrestling, every event. I'm a ticket taker. Every show I can bring my grandchild. I'm a grandma. If I didn't think my grandchildren would be safe there with me, I would have never bring them. It is the one place I can go alone and enjoy myself, every single show there. And I volunteer and be there every show with them. My granddaughters had birthday parties and everything. We just ask you not to close down a place that my grandchildren love and feel safe in. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call forward Suzette Jackson. Good evening, Ms. Jackson. Thank you.
My name is Suzette Jackson. I live at 413 North Stokes. I'm a neighbor of Ms. Baker who spoke earlier.
Welcome.
And the picture that I've given you are some pictures of this intersection that have been causing a problem. First of all, if you notice on the first pic, number one, you can't even see the stop sign and the one-way sign because of the vehicles parked there and the trees overhanging. So, people don't even... I sometimes hang out at the church on Friday, on First Fridays, talking to the fellow from the church. And I personally have witnessed near-head-on collisions over and over and over because of the increase in traffic. But this is an ongoing problem and has been for the over thirty years that I've lived there. People just don't stop for the stop sign. They turn, make that right turn no matter what. We would like to have some signage added. We would like an additional... We'd like to have the signs moved. If you look at number three, it'll show you where we think the stop sign should be. And we've also asked about putting in a "Do not enter" sign on the Stokes side so that as they turn... I don't know if any of you have noticed the stop sign going in the wrong direction on Stokes Street because so many people just would fly out onto Otsego without stopping. So, we think there should be a stop sign at Franklin and Stokes. So we think there should be a stop sign at Franklin and Stokes. We think that there are additional signs that say "Cross traffic does not stop" because they don't stop even when there's a stop sign or even if they see it. They'll just keep right on going. And we also, someone suggested earlier that they extend the no parking area from the corner of Franklin back towards Union so that it would keep the signs from being obscured. We're not asking a lot. We just want some safety. We say with the accident that Ms. Baker spoke about and then the numerous accidents and near accidents on a daily basis. And often you'll be coming up the street and people are coming at you, and they're not going to stop or they're not going to move. You keep telling them, "Move back, move back," and they won't even, they expect you to back up and get out of the way and you're going the right way. So this has become a very chronic safety problem and has been for the 30 years I've lived there, not just for people going in, coming and going from the church, but just the increase in traffic in town. Whenever there's any kind of an event, we run into this over and over and over. We've called the police and asked them when they can to come out and sit on a Friday night when that's happening, and they've been able to sometimes, not often because they're so busy elsewhere and we understand that. But we still need to have something more going on there to enforce this and also to make it so that people actually can see it and that they can actually see the signs in order to observe them. I don't know if there's any questions?
Well, Ms. Jackson, we appreciate you bringing our attention along with Mrs. Baker. Well, definitely, it's on our radar now. I'm definitely trying to like scratch my head for a second thinking about my, I mean, I drive the city streets a lot, just trying to think about what you're talking about. It sounds like you got some ideas.
Yeah.
So, okay, so I have your information here. I mean, if we needed a contact, you wouldn't mind if like perhaps Department, Director Conway contacted you or Chief, okay, so did you have anything to say?
Yeah, we could probably take some of the lessons learned from Washington Street because the amount of people going the wrong way are in Washington really has reduced since the city took the initiative in putting up signs in different key locations. So that it could be a good opportunity here too, but we could, we really need the input of the police department as well. Thank you.
We appreciate you speaking, Ms. Jackson. We'll look into it.
Did you have these?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind giving those a copy, that'd be great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Have a good evening. Let's call forward Pam Burns. Good evening and welcome, Ms. Burns. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Pam Burns, 505 Anchor Drive in Jopetown.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. So I am a past resident of Haverty Grace, and I'm thinking about moving back here. But I've, am presently the founder and the creative director of the True North Project. In the past, I have also been one of the founding people and board member of Susquehanna Music and Arts Festival and Freedom Road Productions. I've also did the booking for First Fridays here for a while, so. And Mayor Martin, we really, the Susquehanna Music and Arts Festival, always appreciated you being there and hanging with us and the care that you took with us. So it came as a surprise that this is all going on with the State Theater. I have worked with the State Theater for almost four years. Actually, Eve Noe was born on the same, on the first day that we presented there. And so from that time, the balcony has been an issue because, and Jared has heard from me on a monthly basis about, "When is it going to be open? When is it going to be open? Can we do a celebration when it opens?" Because, you know, there's some historic value there. And we continue to bring acts there. We will actually be part of the co-op there. Very excited about that. I'm a Hartford County girl, but I love Haverty Grace and we bring everything to Haverty Grace because it's a good place for it. And so the retired attorney on my board said to me, "Talk about the economic value that the State Theater brings." And there is that. You know, we had actually My Dream, the Cowsils, which is a 60s band, come here, and people from all over the East Coast came. We're having them back next year, and somebody from Australia is coming. And we sent them to Washington Street Bookstore. We sent them to Buhukas. We sent them to Bombois. We sent them to La Cucina. We sent them to all of those places because there's value there. But the main thing about my organization is we're all about heart. And there is a quote on our website that says, "If you have a decision to make, what you need to ask is, is there heart? And if there's no heart, walk away from it." The State Theater has heart. That's why we partner with them, and we couldn't ask for better partners than Jared and Katie. And I'll talk about this being a Hallmark Town. This feels like Hallmark. This feels like an episode of Hallmark, us coming against the council or up to the council and saying, "Look, we want this to work. Let's make it a good ending to this story." Thank you so much.
So Pam, are you moving back to Haverty Grace?
I don't know. What are you going to do about the state? And I did vote for you, by the way.
All right, thank you. Nevin Randall.
Good evening, sir. Welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record? Thank you. Thank you for having me. My name is Nevin Randall. My address is 2801 Pulaski Highway.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much for having me tonight. I'll be speaking on behalf of the State Theater. First of all, thank you, council, for having us and listening to our plea to extend State Theater for three months. I am a Hartford County Public School teacher, 25 years, proud to be a, thank you, middle school teacher at that, which is even tougher. But I also own Luna's House Animal Care and Education Center in Edgewood. I am the co-founder with my wife. We own a 14,900 square foot building that we actually moved into, so we actually live in that building as well. To have a business like that, we have a lot of bills to pay, and we do fundraisers since we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. For years, the State Theater of Haverty Grace has been a major supporter of Luna's House. The Noes have opened the theater for us for our annual Rock to the Rescue concerts where we have a concert. By no means does it hit the capacity. I wish it would someday. Get close to the capacity if everybody would like to come when you guys give the extension. That'd be awesome. We do karaoke for the critters at the State Theater, and in November of 2024, we actually had our first inaugural on the Catwalk Pet Fashion Show and Costume Contest. And it was actually emceed by Kristen Breslin, who is on Good Morning Maryland. She was the emcee of it. Through all of these fundraisers that we do with the State Theater, at the end of the day, when we leave, the Noes do not charge us anything for the rental. They are saving so many animals' lives every day that they help us out. It's amazing to meld the arts, music, and then the passion of animals and to bring a community that might not otherwise come into the State Theater. They do. And they leave the State Theater, they add to that revenue of Haverty Grace as well. Like I said, they provide us with that beautiful historic revenue for all of these events at no charge. And I wish I could pay their bills to, you know, for the sprinkler system. I can't do that. But I can stand here and tell you that they are an amazing group of people. These two are amazing individuals. And I just ask, I plead with you to please just give that extension. We're already canceling fundraisers. We were going to do a karaoke to the critters, but that was going to be in the end of July, and we're unsure whether we can have that or not. So if you would give that extension, you guys would be saving lives as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let's call forward Kirk Smith. Left, okay, all right. Mark Schwitzer. Good evening, Mark. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Mark Schwitzer. I live at 1918 Stephen Drive, Edgewood, Maryland.
Welcome.
I don't have nearly as an impressive resume as everyone else, and I guess I don't have probably as touching of a story to tell. I'm here in support of the State Theater, and I've actually had the pleasure of performing there once. I have anxiety as well as several other issues, and they're one of the only places that's ever actually made me feel comfortable enough to actually come out and perform in front of a group of people. Standing in front of all of you right now is absolutely horrifying.
You're doing a good job. You're doing a good job.
And it's one of the only actual venues in Hartford County. As someone else who plays music and knows a whole lot of people who's in the music community, I know that it's very supported and especially in that group in particular. And most of the people I've met have been around and performed in lots of different places for fundraisers and all kinds of local events, not just here in Hartford County, are here in Haverty Grace, but all over Hartford County and have supported probably all of you. And in fact, I believe I've seen some of you at the State Theater a time or two, and I imagine that some of you have definitely been there and understand how important it is to us. And I don't leave my room that much, let alone even my property or the town I live in or the street. But I came out here today because it was important to me. And again, I'm terrified. I'm kind of shaking right now, but I just, my own humble opinion, I've brought my son there, I've brought my family there, I've been there with friends, you know? I've never felt uncomfortable. I've never felt unsafe. I've never seen anyone else feel that way either. There's never been any congestion at the front door or out, and honestly, to find out that it's being closed down over some sort of safety variance just kind of seems wild to me because it's, of all the venues I've been to, been one of the easiest ones to get in and out of. I don't know if any of you have ever been to places like Silver Springs or any of the other big venues that are here in Maryland, but Christ, you can get stuck at the door for like five, 10, 20 minutes even sometimes just trying to get outside. I've never had that at the State Theater. I've never not been able just to walk outside. I've never not been able to even just get in and out of the bathroom. I know that's not a safety issue, but it's important to some people, so. I don't know. I guess that's really all I have to say. I would just appreciate that you all would give them the extra space to make the time because it's very important to me. And honestly, watching as many people who's come out here, it's very important to us. I think most of the people here are here to support the theater, and I think the theater supports a lot of revenue, which I think, and I'm not trying to sound rude, but it seems like the most important thing to a lot of people. So just in case that's what it is for you, it's there. But if that's not it, if it's society, if it's community, that's clearly here in massive numbers. And we would all, I guarantee you, appreciate it. We would all come, we would all attend, we will all be safe, we will all be respectful, and we would all very much appreciate you to give them their extra time to make things happen because I think we all know that they will. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's call forward Mr. Allen Fair. No worries. No worries. No rush.
Allen Fair, Three Concord Place, Haverty Grace, Maryland.
Welcome, Mr. Fair.
Thank you. I'm here tonight because of the issues of possibly closing down 100 and 200 blocks of Washington and having no parking. I would be here anyway if I hadn't bought Joseph's. Met with people today, live in upper part of county, interested in coming in and building a tremendous restaurant. If I would have told them there was a possibility of there'd be no parking, they would have walked out the door and been gone. The other thing, I've spent the last three days, which is not easy, oh, it just came, walking from store to store and back and forth. I've talked to 95% of the store owners. Two of them are in favor of closing it. Now, the one that started this, she only wants the 200 block to be because her business is on the 100 block. Also, some of the things I heard that when the, down in the 200 block, one in, one business, he lost $40,000 that year. Another one lost $75,000. Up in the 100 block now, one is $10,000 a month losing, and then another one was, I think, $50,000. That's a lot of money. I did talk to the one that started this thing and very disappointed in their thinking. And then the other one that is in favor of it, he liked the idea of he has a small store there that there'd be people out there dancing in the street. Now, who gives a damn where people out there dance? We need parking. We need where they can drive through and, like I say, probably, even if I hadn't bought Joseph's, I would be up here supporting the people. They work hard. They've struggled through making those streets beautiful and lost a lot of money. And I've had two of them, and I'm not going to say who they are, but if you close down the 100 block, they're moving, closing, been here for years. We don't need that. The other thing, I've been going to the State Theater since I was about that high, and I'd hate to see them close. So one thing I'm going to do tonight, tomorrow, I'm going to give you a $5,000 check. I am a hugger. But anyway, I support these people. Like I say, when I was a kid, I won't tell you about my first date there either. I'll leave that one alone. But anyway, I guess my time's going to be up, but you know, I love this town. You all knew that, and I'll do anything to help them. I think, thank you very much.
Let's call, thank you, Mr. Fair. Let's call forward Gladys Springsteele. Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Sure. Gladys Springsteele. I live at 3904 Somerset Court in Haverty Grace, but I own a business, 109 North Washington Street in Haverty Grace. My husband, John, my son, Yaya, my son, Steven, and my oldest son, Daniel, waited four years for our spot. We know the Capolas. And when it finally opened up, we were able to open 410 Panadas as an extension to our food truck, which we've had for eight years now. I couldn't see myself going anywhere else but Haverty Grace. Then we signed our lease in October, and we opened January 4th of 2024, and it's been fabulous, exactly what I thought it would be, until this construction started. As Mr. Fair said, stated, we are one of the ones that we have lost well over $50,000 that I don't have. I just have two boys. I graduated college in May, and that was devastating. I'm still working full-time just to help pay employees so I don't have to let them go and to pay Mr. and Mrs. Coppola their rent. The fact that we had this project is understandable. The streets are beautiful and I can't wait for them to open. However, then hearing about this possible Amtrak situation and now the possible street closures, I just don't know how many more slaps in the face. then, hearing about this possible Amtrak situation, and now the possible street closures, I just don't know how many more slaps in the face we as small merchants can take. It's devastating. Um, I don't, there's so many questions. I mean, is this gonna be year-round? Who's gonna pay for the tents and, and to possibly house people? Nobody wants to sit under 100-degree weather, under the sun, so I'm assuming there's tents. We can't afford it. I'm sure not, most of these merchants can't afford it. Uh, we've already lost a ton of money, a ton of time. DoorDash, I've had to run out two blocks down the street to hand DoorDash to delivery, for delivery, because they can't even park because of the construction. I understand it's needed. I'm not complaining about the construction, but I ask you to please reconsider the whole closure, possible closure. Again, I don't know how true this is, you know, things are just going around that we hear as merchants. And I've never had the pleasure of meeting Jared or Katie, but I will say that a lot of our business does come from you guys. We see people in, and their costumes coming in. And we love you guys, never had, again, the pleasure of meeting you guys, and the fact that, you know, we spend hours and hours and hours in that kitchen. It's so nice to just be able to walk a few blocks down and go see music, or wrestling, or whatever. And so, I'm also here for them. Uh, I do support them and just, you know, plead you to give them their extension. I'm sure they'll make good with their word. Again, I don't wanna have to pack and leave. I don't. I mean, I'm looking to open up another business in downtown Havertie Grace. I'm not speaking on it, but there's another possibility that I would like to put my money into. We are taxpayers amongst everyone else here. And it's just devastating to see our numbers escalate, and then, starting in November, the, uh, just went down, completely went down. I mean, we can't even, again, it's hard to pay our bills. So we just ask you to please reconsider, or take our word, take our feedback seriously, as to how devastating this is going to be. People wanna dance, go to the State Theater. Thank you for your time.
Next, next form I have, uh, my apologies, um, I'm not able to read the last name, uh, but it's Chris with a K, and parentheses, Great Aids Baltimore.
Mayor Martin and City Council, I just thank you for taking the time, not only to hear it from me, but from your citizens as well. This is my first city council meeting, um, and I really appreciate you opening the doors like this. I'm, I'm from Baltimore, Maryland. I'm not from here. Um, I didn't even know about Havertie Grace until I met Hallie Spangler at Valley Who Show, and um, he really put this on-
Chris, can I get your last name real quick, only because I couldn't read it on paper?
My apologies. It's Ruling.
Chris Ruling, okay, I'm off. Please proceed, please proceed.
So, in meeting and finding Havertie Grace, I started looking at the history. I'm a big history buff. I found out that the name came from my favorite character in the Broadway play Hamilton, uh, with Lafayette. I also found out that it was one vote away from being the nation's capital, uh, which is pretty amazing to me. And then I found out the history about the State Theater. And with it being here since 1910, that there was two theaters here, and one of them burnt down, and this was the main theater for a long time. And just like my gentleman, my friend here, who's so generous with his money, um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of history and a lot of memories that go there. And there's gonna be a lot more, because my company, uh, we've moved up here. We are doing big shows at Hopkins Farm Brewery. We're partnered with Wise Markets, doing huge toy drives and food drives for this community. And with the State Theater, we were gonna purchase the 8x10 and the tin roof, and take that business to Baltimore, but I felt as if we found a home here with the NOS, and with the Hopkins, and with just about everybody that's here. And it's obvious that this place loves this town, and they come out and support and donate. So, for me, um, I see a future here, and I'm not really worried about the past. There's been a lot of bickering, and I've kinda found myself in the middle of that, and I apologize for any social media things that I did. That's not my style. I don't, the, the past doesn't really matter, but we have a moment like right here, to just come together as a community, open up this theater, and get rocking and rolling on having a historic building. I mean, there's, it's 115 years old. How many towns can say they have 115-year-old theater? They have a bank, they have right on the waterfront. And I don't wanna take my business to Baltimore, but I have big shows planned there, I have big things planned. We are talking about doing a studio where we can have Havertie Grace Has Talent, where we can livestream constantly and create a space for high school students and college students to come in and learn real-world experience, instead of just sitting in the classroom and dreaming about it. This is a place for dreamers, and if you're a dreamer too, and you wanna add to that, this is your opportunity. It's a crossroads. It doesn't matter what anything else that was said, anything else that matters. This is an opportunity with a three-month extension, they're gonna have the money. They pretty much have the money there, and Jimmy Seafood's gonna come with the rest of it. So, the plan, the plan is simple, we're gonna have enough to do it, and if you give us the opportunity, I promise you, I personally will not let you down. I will bring all the business here. There are so many people here that's with me, that's not from Havertie Grace, and they come here and they choose to spend their money, and they hang with your neighbors, and they love this place. And I'm telling you, if you just give this extension, it will be the best decision that you've made since you've been sitting in that seat. Thank you.
That concludes the forms that I had pre-filled out at this point. Now, uh, we're on open floor. Just please raise your hand, be recognized. Yes. Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
My name is Mr. Alex Anderson. I live at 1908 Bennett, Aberdeen, Maryland.
Welcome.
We moved to Maryland a year and a half ago, because I have terminal cancer. I've been through 20 surgeries, six bouts of cancer. And I come to Havertie Grace because I fell in love with the State Theater, and with the water, and I don't wanna die here. And I'm asking, I'm sorry.
Take your time.
I'm putting this on my bucket list. But I, I would just appreciate, we gave three months, because um, it really means the world to my wife and I, were able to spend time. Um, I've had terminal cancer for five and a half years, and they gave me three to five to live. I plan to live longer, but um, I don't know how much more time I have. And I don't know what issues, because I'm not a political person, but I would really appreciate it, if you would just give three months, so I can go back to the theater, because sometimes I don't feel too good, and sometimes I can just have a few hours where cancer doesn't ruin my life. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
My name is Michael Newton Moore. I live at 437 Trimble Fields Drive, Edgewood, Maryland.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Uh, I'm here to speak on the support of the State Theater. I have lived in Hartford County for over a decade now, and I'm ashamed to say, in that time, I was coming to Havertie Grace maybe once or twice a year. Since I started going to events at the State Theater, uh, in October of last year, it's been every week I'm up here, doing something at some event, going to some, supporting some of the local businesses here, and Havertie Grace has become a second home because of the State Theater. Uh, I, I own my own small business, and I understand how hard it is to build the kind of community that Jared and Katie have, and I know how easy it is to lose a community like they've built. And the one thing that I would hate more than anything is for the city of Havertie Grace to lose the community that has grown up and organically has fallen in love with the State Theater and your city because of it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Green shirt, yes. Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Hamel. I live at 123 South Washington Street, Havertie Grace, Maryland.
Welcome.
I have lived here for about five years now, and the big draw of this town was the arts community. Um, I have a degree in performing arts, and I've spent a lot of my time performing in the venues here, including the Opera House, the State Theater, the Star Center. This town is the center of my entire life. I want to live and retire here. And a big part of that is my identity as a queer woman, and a big part of that is that, uh, the State Theater of Havertie Grace has become a safe queer space. They do performances like the drag brunches, and I have never felt so safe in a community. And the big part of this issue is that safety is on the table. Um, however, they have not violated any safety rules thus far. They are 60, now, more than 65% of the way to their goal. Um, given the three months, they will be able to reach that goal and create a safe environment for more, um, capacity. All I ask is that you recognize that the two faces of this community have thousands of people standing behind them. There are people in the hallway lined up to say their piece, and I'm very grateful that I was able to speak today, so thank you all for hearing me. I love this town. I love the arts. I voted for many of you, and I hope that you recognize that Katie and Jared are here to provide a safe space for everybody wanting to perform, or view, or pay money. The big, um, issue that we've been facing lately is the construction. You know, I live on Washington. I have to take six different lefts to get out of town. I walk down the street every day and I get pebbles in my shoe. The bricks look great, though. But a lot of these businesses have lost revenue on this, but I have to tell you that the State Theater of Havertie Grace has remained full. They remain selling tickets. They brought people to this town. I bring every family member that I keep in contact with to this town, and I take them to the State Theater, and we go to open mic nights, and we go to drag shows, and I just can't even tell you what this means to me and my community. Um, so I thank you all for hearing me, and please, the three-month extension will prove that the theater will remain profitable and, um, a staple of this community. So, thank you.
Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
My name is Viki Miller, 352 Commerce Street.
Welcome.
I've never met Katie. One of the things I wanna tell you is, I'm a band geek. I'm a trained orchestra musician. I played on Broadway. I played with the Philadelphia Orchestra. Performing arts is something I grew up with. She's gonna be $250 closer. I pledge that tonight. As someone who has restored old buildings, I know what that's like, to refit old buildings. And I think this town should be gracious enough to give them the three-month extension that they, they need. I know what it's like to lose something. I lost everything in my life at one time, and I don't wanna see that. I've, my first experience in there was during the council meetings. And it just, it just struck a chord with me. And then when I heard about this, it's like, I had to stand up and do something. So, give them the three months. Three months is not, I, I mean, that building's been there for over 100 years. Three months is not gonna be too tough on the council. Thank you.
Very much. Uh, front row, right here. Yes. Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Tony Mallory. Uh, my address is 28 Foxborough Lane, Baltimore, Maryland. I'm your neighbor to the south from Perry Hall, and uh, I will keep this brief. So the State Theater, one of the things I noticed is that the State Theater promotes itself on being sandwiched between Philly, Baltimore, and DC. Now, when I saw this, this tells me that the inclusion of these three locations underlines the idea that Havertie Grace of the town benefits from the revenue that is bought from outside patrons. And be, having said that, um, simply put, you want more opportunity, not less. Right now, you have two theaters that are, I don't wanna use competing for the same space, but this shouldn't be a either-or competition. There is space for both. Uh, I would actually add that between the two spaces, you may very well have performers that may be appropriate for one, but maybe not so for the other. So why make the consumer choose? Why not have space for both? Also, and I'll conclude here, um, my biggest question is, what actually does happen if the State Theater is closed down? Uh, you have a revenue stream that if you close it down, you're looking at at least six months to a year before you get another tenant. And that's depending on who they are and whatever financial benefits they have, or, or financial, uh, you know, whatever they have, whatever money they have to work with. That will cause time, uh, it will cause loss of revenue to the city, uh, and you've already gotten, if I read the report correctly, you've already gotten $100,000 from the state of Maryland uh, for renovations. So what happens to that money if the State Theater closed down? Do you lose that money? Does it go back to the state? Does it evaporate in thin air? What happens? Anyway, so I will conclude by saying that, uh, as I started, stated before, you want more opportunity in this town, not more. I am from Perry Hall. It took me 30 minutes to get here, and I routinely come up here because this is a beautiful place. My bandmate from 20 years ago made a family here because this is a beautiful place. I wanna perform here at some point, because this is a beautiful place. Why take away from that as opposed to add to it? Thank you for your time.
Hello. Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for record?
Courtney Bosley, 3517 McShane Way, Dundalk, Maryland. And like the other person, as soon as I got up here, I just kinda lost all my-
Welcome, Courtney.
Thank you. Um, first off, just during this meeting, they've raised more money on their GoFundMe. I've been looking at it. We have $20,675 just on GoFundMe, plus the other that have been, you know, and plus what we made over the weekend at the FWA show, um, which I know was at least $250, so very close to their goal. Um, again, like some other people have mentioned, the only reason I'm even here is the State Theater. I, I haven't, didn't come to Havertie Grace before that. Um, I'm just a big wrestling fan. There was a wrestling show. I showed up, and I've been to every single wrestling show at the State Theater since then. Um, I've brought my grandmother. Um, I've more importantly brought my cousin, and who, when I first asked her, I said, "Do you like wrestling?" She goes, "I know The Rock and, uh, I know The Rock and Rhea Ripley." And she came to the show, and again, now she's in love with indie wrestling specifically. She comes to every show with me. It's super important to us, and you know, not everybody remotely is even here, but like, I've made a ton of friends just from showing up to the State Theater, and again, you know, I, I wouldn't be here if not for them, and you know, I, I honestly won't come back if not for them. There's just, they're, they're the reason that I'm here, and like the last person said as well, I don't know any of the politics stuff. I, I know nothing other than, you know, I needed to be here for that. Um, you know, I drive an hour out. I drove an hour out tonight and waited all this time to talk, not even knowing what I was gonna say, if I was gonna say something, but I felt like I had to. And like they said, you know, three months, three more months after all this time, there's no way they're not gonna raise their money. There's no way they're not gonna do what needs to be done. You know, even in just a little time that I've known them and other people that, you know, come to these shows, and like I said, this is just the wrestling shows. Forget all of the other stuff that I don't know anything about, are just so great, and again, I wouldn't bring my grandmother, I wouldn't bring my cousin, and I know that, you know, all of the people that bring their kids, so cute. Um, wouldn't bring their kids if it wasn't safe. I've never felt unsafe, ever. I said kids, and there we go. But I, I just, I, I'm not really good with words. I don't really know what I'm doing right now. My brain's barely functioning, but this was really, really- but this was really, 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 really important to me. And unfortunately, I, I can't help monetarily, but I felt like hopefully I could help this way. So, I think I'm, that was...
Good job, Courtney.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening, sir, and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
My name is Kyle DeReemer, and I come all the way from across the bridge in Port Deposit, 200 North Main Street, Port Deposit.
Welcome.
Thank you. I know that's like California to the people of Harford County. It's so far. Also, not a public speaker. You seem to have brought us all out here tonight. But I will say this. I'm not here because I am an actor, or a musician, or somebody who is directing a play, or is a part of the co-op. I'm here as a father, who has known these fine folks for the last five years, and I've never felt more comfortable or safe bringing my daughter anywhere in this city, or honestly, in the state of Maryland since being here. We've lived here for ten years. Unfortunately, we didn't know them the first half. But we do now, and we would do anything for them. That, that theater is, and I've heard second homes said by other people, it is. And I'm not going to get into the whole like, oh, you know, the economy of the city. I don't know all of that. But I do know that I never came to Havant Grace at all in those first five years. Not, nothing against it. I just had no reason to. And now I have spent plenty of time, plenty of money, at their business as well as other businesses in this city. And I think it would be doing a huge disservice to this community that clearly in three days has raised quite a bit of money for them because it means something. It is important. It is a family. It is not just another business or another old building. It is a place that people can go and enjoy themselves. And I remember, you got a wicked picture out there at one of those softball games that we did for the, for the fundraising. I remember. But, I think what really just, like I said, I'm, I'm going to start rambling. I couldn't even get to three minutes if I wanted to. The point is, they're important enough for me to come out here and talk. The State Theater is important enough for me to come out here and talk. And I would do anything for them. I would leave my child with them. I mean, sometimes I need to. Just saying. But the thing is, is like, like I said, all of the safety things, that seems to be the concern. I've never once felt unsafe. People from Pennsylvania, people from Delaware, people from Florida are all sending money to help them out because they've been to one show and had a great time. And I think that the three months is not a huge ask. And I would hope that the council would take that into consideration. That's, that's all I got. I got closer than I thought, so.
Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Mayor Martin. My name is David DeFrank. I live at 1104 Thrasher Court in Abingdon.
Welcome.
Thank you. I am here to speak on behalf of the State Theater. About four years ago, I was introduced to Jared through his father, Dwayne. Dwayne is, was my teacher at Harford Community College. I was needing to put in some time volunteering at a theater to get some extra credit for one of my classes. Those few months that I was supposed to just spend getting the experience and the credits have turned into a four-year friendship with Jared. And I'm speaking here on behalf, or in my capacity as a volunteer at the state for a brief amount of time for one summer. I'm here as a patron of the theater, and I'm also here as a performer. I have done a couple of shows as an actor at the State Theater. Done everything from kid shows with barely ten people there, all the way up to a packed house for the producers. I don't normally, much like the gentleman earlier, I do not normally get out. First time I stepped into the State Theater, it felt very much like home. The first time you step in there, you see those big cast iron projectors on either side. You know you've entered something special. We are not asking for any additional funds from you guys. We are merely asking for three months to raise the funds. A three-month stay of execution. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
My name is Barbara Snyder. I am at 61 Bayscape Drive in Perriville, Maryland.
Welcome.
I am here to support the State Theater as a member of the Tidewater Players. There is such an art community that has been established in this community, in this city, that I, it breaks my heart to think that the state may not be able to stay open. I've been to many shows there. I've met many people. It's an eclectic building, which I think adds to the charm of this city. And I would like to see them given that. Three months, three months to do the corrections that need to be made so they can continue to perform. And I, as a Tidewater Players member, want to make sure the city knows we support everybody in the arts community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience. Good evening and welcome. May we have your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name's Gabe Webster. I live at 106 Crescent Drive. I am a thirteenth generation member of Harford County. I have performed at the State Theater. I have performed around Havant Grace, all around. And I wasn't really, didn't really have anything prepared until I got here today, and I saw kind of the outpouring of support from other people. I truly believe that art can save lives. It has the power to save lives. I've seen it. I've seen it here in this room with people kind of donating their time and their money, and, and willing to even go ahead and do more for this staple of the community. Like I said, I've both performed with Katie, and I've worked alongside Jared. I've also volunteered at the state. I felt very comfortable there, as someone, like I said, has performed a couple of different places. We brought in a lot of people, and they all had such a great time seeing the production I was a part of, which is Rent, which is a show that takes on kind of, that takes on AIDS, which is something in a community like this is not something that I rarely see in the other performances. And with that, we were able to kind of work with different support groups. I'm forgetting some of the names right now, but able to kind of get word about that as well. The state, while I was sitting here as well, I was thinking, it's the only place I can think of that would have drag brunches followed by professional wrestling matches, followed by a musical theater, followed by a birthday party. I think that's pretty cool. Just, no matter where it is, no matter who's running it, the opportunity to have a venue that does things like that's pretty cool. I, I could probably talk for another fifteen minutes, but I know that, I only have a minute left. This community is bright. It is strong, and it is growing because of the support of people like Jared and Katie. And it will continue to grow as long as its doors are open. I support all the arts. I have friends in the production that's about to open, and I was going to pay to come see it. And I'd really like to continue to spend my money here in Havant Grace. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Austin? Welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Austin Barnes in his 25 Pine Street.
Welcome.
Most of you guys, I recognize, I grew up calling you Mr. Martin, Mr. Bill, Tadus Bill, you know, growing up, Jimmy. My dad was also amazing with you in the Masonic Lodge. I've served a lot of you at McGregor's and Bill Bateman's. I've done a lot of theater. Most of you probably know me as a theater guy. I did it all through high school. I've done with Tidewater. I've done with the state. And I'm here, one, to apologize, because I know I've been floating a lot of social media. I'll tell you one thing. I do a lot of social media gigs as a photographer and a videographer. I hate social media. But I, I had to engage in it because a lot of character here was pulled into question, calling them neglective, and all that. But I, I just want to apologize if any words that I throw around were offensive. But I do want to tag on to what Chris was saying. And a big narrative right now that is being spun is that this is a political movement. And we're, we all know Jared wears his heart on his sleeve. He has a lot to say. But it's just that he has his heart on his sleeve. He loves this community. He hasn't left this community for a reason. It's very easy to go, you know what? Forget this. I'm out. Right? We have to, as a teacher, what I tell my students, it's not about what people are saying, or how they're saying it, but it's actually what they're saying, right? If it's not a political movement, let's prove it. Right? If it's not about him speaking on other issues, let's prove it. Three months? I mean, again, I don't know how that works with code and whatnot, and what is going to happen. But I think that three months, I, I started a GoFundMe for them, not thinking we were going to get jackdiddled, right? And here we are, walking out tonight with close to 25,000, maybe more. Like, it's a space for us to create. It's a space for us to bring revenue in. And I just ask, if it is possible, as a member of this community who grew up here, who has found a home here, who has heard amazing opportunities that we're going to be bringing in with this new co-op model, just give it a chance, you know, and let us work. And that's all. So thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Anyone else? Yes, sir? Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
John Springsteen, 3904 Somerset Court, Havant Grace. Me and my wife have four 10 empanadas. She spoke earlier. And, you know, the lights at the end of the tunnel, construction's almost done. And then we get this curveball rumor of pedestrian only on the two blocks of North Washington. And I mean, to me, that's just crazy. We're already, you know, there, we have customers now that, I just had a guy over the weekend said he, the only reason why he was in town, because he stopped coming to town because he had a sailing lesson, and he ate at our restaurant. But, you know, we've lost a lot of customers that are just, you know, spoiled from the no parking, and then now, you know, this. And I just feel that, you know, on a Monday through Thursday of pedestrian only, that's, I don't know, even weekend, unless it's an event, it has, you know, no meaning. We signed a lease, a five-year lease on a open street, and now we've had a closed street for nine months, or whatever month it's been, and then, you know, and now you're going to close it, or talk about closing it again. I just think it's crazy. You know, maybe it'll work in Annapolis, maybe Cape May. It works in Orlando. I don't think it's going to work here. But that's just, you know, my opinion, and I want to express it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes? Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Yes, hi. I'm Katie Hamrick, 1801 Bear Creek Drive in Forest Hill.
Welcome.
I am also part of Riverstone Theater. I'm a non-voting board member and advisor, and I'm part of the production that should be going up hopefully next weekend. I actually have a question. Is it possible to have a motion tonight that would make that decision for the State Theater today? Or can you provide a timeline for when that decision could be made?
This actually isn't a council matter.
I was just curious. I honestly don't know.
Okay, no worries. I mean, I'm just letting you know this isn't, this isn't what, this isn't a council issue.
The State Theater?
The, the extension, that's not something the council votes on.
Okay.
It's actually the first we've ever heard of tonight, and it's an administrative matter that probably won't be able to do anyway. So...
So, then could you provide the resources, or at least the information that we would need to, for who, who makes that decision?
Well, that decision, to grant any kind of extension, would have to be an administrative decision based on advice from the city attorney, which is how we got this place in the first place, is the advice of the city attorney. So, when everyone's done speaking, the city will provide a detailed timeline of how we got here with a solution of how we can get the State Theater open.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's something that will be handled publicly? Like, that we would hear?
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as everyone's done, the city will share a few background information things, and we'll probably end with just the things that we need to do to get the State Theater open again.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Sure. Anyone else? Yes? Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Oh likewise. Tom Fitzpatrick, 704 South Union Avenue. I think most of you up here, if you don't know me, you know who I am. Most of you do not, although I see a number of familiar faces here. Last weekend was somewhat difficult for me because, on the one hand, on Saturday, we celebrated our greatest day of the year in Havant Grace, the day of our Independence Day celebration. I remember seeing you at the Opera House, Mr. Mayor, that day, and walking out of the building and running into your wife, Taryn, who was pink with, you know, pink with heat and flushed with sweat and running around, and just a walking symbol of the dedication that it requires to run, or an event like that. And it's to that dedication that I want to speak, because there's dedication everywhere in this community. There's dedication up here in this dais, in the offices here. There's dedication out here in this audience with all these artists, performers, volunteers, and investors who have stepped up to build something that we didn't have before, and that we have benefited from considerably. Now, I've been here for close to forty years, and my wife owned a business downtown till recently, and I can remember twenty-five, thirty years ago, a little group of us would gather in an empty storefront once a month and have a little meeting. We called ourselves the Downtown Focus Group. There was Al Fair, whom you've heard from earlier, and John Kil-Savage, whom you've heard from, came to all these meetings. And, who else is there? Okay, that, that's somebody else. Anyway, and in those days, downtown Havant Grace was not what it is today, to say the very least. And we struggled, and advocated, and lobbied, and pushed to get our city government and our community interested in making downtown into something that people would want to see, visit, participate in, and invest in. Our first success was the original standardization of the streetscapes that we did. You can still see it on St. John Street, and we've just replaced it with a new and more sophisticated design on Washington Street, which is a good thing. So, you know, when I think of these, of how many people have come to downtown Havant Grace, who have come to Havant Grace as a community, and poured their ideals, their vision, their sweat, their hard work, and their money into this community, and seen it eventually bear fruit. Because today Havant Grace is a place we can be proud of, and the downtown Havant Grace, and Havant Grace in general, is on the map. Now, I've spent a lot of years covering five or six states in sales, and people would, used to ask me twenty years ago, "Where are you from?" "Havant Grace." And you go, "How do you say that?" "Where is it?" Well, that stopped happening about four or five years ago. People started saying, "Oh, that's a nice town. I've been there." We want to keep it that way. And these unfortunate controversies that erupt periodically do not help us. They do not serve our interests. They, they make us, and frankly, the controversy that's going on now makes us look very, very bad. So I beseech everybody involved in the discussion over the State Theater to, I urge patience. I urge the spirit of cooperation. And, and recall that all of us are dedicated to having a better future. Not just the State Theater, but every business downtown, and every citizen, citizen of this community. And quite frankly, I believe, all of you as well. Now, I do- Now, I do, before I exit stage left, I want to say one other thing about the idea of closing down Washington Street to pedestrians. In the 1970s, that was the hottest idea in urban planning. And I watched, I watched them do it in Cape May, New Jersey, where it was successful. I watched them do it in downtown Baltimore, where it was a miserable failure. I watched them do it in Charlottesville, Virginia, and it was a success because they built massive parking garages on the downhill slopes so that people didn't have to walk more than half a block to get to a store. And I watched them do it in Salisbury, Maryland. Salisbury, Maryland had a downtown, and they closed off four blocks of downtown, made it a pedestrian walkway, and virtually every business downtown that wasn't a bank or an engineering firm or a lawyer went out of business. And that street was dead, and I do mean dead. Today, that street has been demolished and replaced by a streetscape not dissimilar from the one that we have just, that we are just in the process of completing here in our downtown, which I think is going to be a tremendous success and a great asset for The idea of closing it all, I think that, I think that's a bad idea. It was a bad idea in the 1970s. It's a bad idea in the 2020s. However, if you wanted to just close the street for events, it wouldn't be that difficult to put eight bollards on those two blocks, two on each end. They can be removable. The whole job shouldn't cost you more than $20,000. And, you know, that might, that might address some of the concerns, particularly for events. But closing the streets off completely, I think you're cutting off your nose to spite your face. But again, just to conclude, I'll go back to my last point. I urge that we all calm down, stay off social media, work through these problems, and build a future for downtown, build a future for the state theater, build a future for the Opera House, build a future for the Star Center, and build a future for all of us. Thank you all very much.
Who else wishes to speak? Yes, sir. Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Brayden Piccolo Klein. My address is 4518 Raspe Avenue, Baltimore County, Maryland.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Forgive me, I only knew that we were allowed to speak about an hour or two ago, so I've been typing this out. Also, some of the things I'm about to say, I haven't even told some people that are very close to me, so please just bear with me, I'm a bit nervous. What I'd like to say is in regards to the Havant Grace State Theater, my personal story with this theater is, and a little bit before the theater, is this time one year ago, I was just beginning to climb up from the lowest point in my life. I was in rehab, I was helplessly addicted to alcohol, was figuring out how to leave a tumultuous situation at home without a car, trying to hold a job and also stay involved in my hobby of acting, and considering the thing that was beginning to seem the most plausible at the time, which was unfortunately to end my own life. Right before I reached that point, I found God, or I should say, God found me, by performing what I can only describe as a miracle in my life. It was shortly after I found faith that by happenstance, I ran into an old theater friend as she was on her way to an audition. That audition was for Jesus Christ Superstar at the Havant Grace State Theater. Now, I had not performed live theater since 2018 and had never had a singing role in a musical, let alone a rock opera. This, coupled with the fact that my last production before that left me with nightmares, which I still have from time to time, made me a bit apprehensive, but in the name of embracing my newfound faith, I decided to go for it. Long story short, I got in, and the people I met in that production greatly helped me make it through the most difficult transition of my life as I left my old situation and stepped into a new chapter. I was able to talk to Katie Noe about the problems I was facing personally outside of rehearsal. I was able to talk with our director, Austin Barnes, when things were rough and I needed some understanding. And all in all, I felt truly accepted and safe with people I had only just met at a very vulnerable time in my life. And I can say from experience that that is not easy to come by. So to that, I say thank God for the state theater of Havant Grace, and it is because of my experience that I ask, as someone who might have actually chuckled at this expression a year ago, for everyone to please consider, what would Jesus do? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Thank you for your patience. I saw you standing out there for a while. Good evening and welcome. May we have your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Tom Statterman. I live in 266 Paradise Road in Aberdeen, but I have a house here on 215 South Washington Street.
Welcome.
And thanks, thank you for, I know you've been listening a long time. I'll keep it very short today. I just came here to support the theater. And I don't know anything about sprinklers, I don't know anything about timelines, I don't know anything about really what's going on with the issue here, but I'll just tell you that it, I do know that it means a lot to the people here in Havant Grace and the people that, that work at the state theater and the people who go to, go to the events and the people that participate there. Me personally, I play guitar there at their open mics at the state theater. I've been doing that the last couple of years since my, my wife passed away, but it means a lot to me and means a lot to a lot of people. I hope you can consider doing something to extend it and keep it open. That's all I had. Thank you.
Hi, good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record.
Lori Rube, 302 Giles Street.
Welcome.
Let me say first, this is the first town meeting I've ever been to, so I apologize if.
It's okay, you're doing good.
Just, first of all, I want to say, I love this town. I enjoy the state theater very much and a lot of other places downtown, the park, Ride the Tide, et cetera. But just in the interest of transparency, and I know you said earlier that you guys don't have anything to do with this decision, but in the interest of transparency, if the state theater was given an occupancy use of A1, then why, I think it's A1 and B? Is that what you were given in 2019? Did it change? Because in 2019, the City of Havant Grace waived the building code requirements and allowed the occupancy group to be changed from A3 to A1 and B. Did that change again? Okay, so if the A1 group occupancy requirements for a sprinkler system is fixating for performances at theaters, et cetera, and it's below the occupancy load of 300, why are they required to even have the sprinkler system to begin with? I'm not saying they shouldn't get one, but just what, if that's the code, why are they being required to get it? Also, that was 2019? They've been there, how long have you guys been there? So this is 2025. So for five years, I presume they were given a temporary occupancy use certificate. So for five years, they've been allowed to operate without the required sprinkler system, and now they're being required to get it. So I'm just asking, in the interest of occupancy, and I realize that you guys are not going to answer that question, but I think everybody should be asking that question. That's all I want to say.
Yes, sir. Good evening, welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Steve Tracy, I live at 1030 Chesapeake Drive.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm here to support the state theater. These guys are great. I'm not, so I'm not originally from Havant Grace. I moved up here for a woman. And that was, that was the first place she took me, was the state theater. They were doing an open mic there, and she took me there. It's a, it's a great place. It's a great place. It provides a lot of opportunities for people who are into the arts, who want to perform. I was there, I was there recently for a gender reveal wrestling match for a friend of mine. And the reason he did it at the state theater is because, well, nobody else would entertain that kind of thing. And him and all of his family came up here to do it there from over an hour away. And I say that to lend credence to the argument that they were making, that they bring, they bring a lot of people up to the town. They bring a lot of business here, like thousands of people a month. And I think it'd be a shame if, if they get shut down. So just like to ask you to consider their request for an extension on getting whatever it is they need to get fixed. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am. Good evening, welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record.
Carrie Freeberger, 1705 Abmar Bel Air.
Welcome.
Thank you. I was not planning to speak, but listening to some of the comments, I just had some questions. Sorry, I'm not really dressed. I was at Star Camp, Star Center during summer camp today. So I'm a theater mom. I am a volunteer usher for Scottfield, former board member of Scottfield, Tidewater usher, volunteer, theater mom, all the companies. I'm now affiliated with Riverstone, who is trying to put on a show this weekend or next. But again, like people had said before, trying to get our show in tonight is what we were supposed to be doing. I had a couple of questions, only because I don't know the timeline and I'm not sure if you have the answers, but I know as an usher, when I would usher at the Opera House, I would also receive emails asking to usher at the state theater, because they were affiliated. It was the same thing. You ushered at, it was before Star Center existed, you ushered at the Opera House, you could also usher at the state theater. So my question is, if it's unsafe, then why was it allowed to be used as a venue prior to them purchasing it when it was affiliated with the Opera House? Why were there events there? Why were there bands? Why were there shows? And why was that burden then passed on to them? And why did the city use it for events when they knew it was unsafe? So it was used for shows long before they owned it. So obviously then, if you thought it was unsafe now, it should be thought of as unsafe back then. That was just my question is why? But I will tell you, as an usher, who has ushered for numerous venues, including HCC and elsewhere in the county, not just in Havant Grace, honestly, it is safer. I felt safer as an usher. I'm a Hartford County teacher, and unfortunately, we always have to look for exits, we always have to look for duck and cover, we always have to just have that in our mind. And I feel like the state theater is safer to some extent. It's main level. You can get out those front doors. You could get out easier. At the Opera House, it's not as easy. So as an usher, as a parent, as a mom who would leave my kid there for theater, as a volunteer, as a board member of a previous company, like, it's just those things. So if safety is truly the issue, I would implore you to look at all safety aspects of things. We have patrons that are in wheelchairs or walkers that have to go up the elevator for the Opera House, and that's deemed safe in the event of an emergency. And I'm not just talking fire suppression, I'm talking any emergency. The other thing is, it has kind of come to my attention that possibly, per the city charter, the council can take legal recourse, and would the county council, or will the city council be willing to research and look into that as an option? And the other thing I just want to say real quick is, it almost seems like, and I don't know the politics of it, and I don't know who said what about whom, there's so much drama in the drama community, I can't stand it. Okay? I'm a drama mom for a long time, and it, it's annoying, right? I get it. But it seems like it's really personal, and I, as an outsider, I don't live in Havant Grace, I have no idea. But from what you're doing with the streets and everything and hurting businesses, I almost feel as though some ulterior motive. Are you guys looking to take over the state? Like, do you want it for yourself or another venue income source? Like, why are you making it so hard for people? Why are you making it so hard? I don't even live in Havant Grace, but I love Hartford County. I teach my art kids about the history, all these buildings. You've got, you know, you've got Rock Run, and you've, you've got all these things around you, the history of Hartford County, and you're making it hard for people to maintain that history. Somebody could come in and buy that building. They could, they could throw it all in tonight and say, forget it, this isn't worth it. This is not worth our heartache. And what are you going to do? Have somebody else from out of state come and buy the building and completely renovate it in a different way and turn it into something modern and ugly and does it match Havant Grace? Like, they're the heart. Bel Air's known as the heart of Hartford, but you guys are also an arts district. You're hurting the arts by doing this.
Who else would like to speak? Good evening, welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record.
Hi.
For the record.
Hi. My name is Liz Nemeth, and I live at 315 Alliance Street.
Welcome.
Thanks. As a child of parents who love this town and have worked to restore homes and beautify this city, my parents have been part of the Historic District Commission, they've been part of the Beautification Commission, which doesn't exist anymore. I understand the blood, sweat, and tears it takes and the heart it takes of people like Katie and Jared to protect our city's beautiful state theater. I know that it takes so much money, work, to rehab a building that was not made for this century and bring it up to code. And they did that and chose to do that in our town. As a lifelong resident of this town, I remember going after a Christmas parade to the state theater. There was like a little show going on, but after that, I was never able to go again. And I remember thinking, my goodness, what, I wonder if we could ever bring this back to life. And hearing about the millions of dollars that it would cost to bring it back to the restored capacity that we would need, I thought, it's never going to happen. But then I remember hearing about a couple that were coming to restore the building, and I was a little wary of if it would ever come to fruition, but I was excited. And I remember attending, I remember attending some of the first events that were there. There were fundraisers for the Seroptemists, they watched movies. There, there are a group of people, Katie and Jared, who are here not just for themselves. They are here for this community. You've heard that they, they do fundraisers for Luna's House. I think if I went to them and asked them to, to how, like, do something for school or something, they would jump at the chance. They're always trying to give back to the community. Now, I do understand, as I am also a Hartford County Public School teacher, that I'm a rule follower. And whether or not we feel safe doesn't necessarily mean the building is safe. However, it is national code that sprinklers are not needed for less than 300 people, and it seems that that's what's been done. So I'm a little confused about why they were shut down and what, what rationale was given for that, if they were meeting those needs of under 300 people. They are committed to giving, putting sprinklers in because they think it's the right thing to do and they want a safe building. But as we know, with all of these beautiful historic buildings, it's important for us to make sure that they are up to code and that people are safe. So they are committed to that. We know that the money going into it is important. Sorry, I have one more thing. So the theater is a treasure in our city, and it is apparent from people from all over who we've heard from tonight. We've heard from Port Deposit, Aberdeen, Bel Air, Edgewood, Dundalk, just here tonight. It's not only brings revenue to our city, but adds the small town charm we pride ourselves on as Havant Gracians. I dream of the day we can see the marquee rebuilt that Alan Fair, I'm sure, got to see in his time, and that starts with reopening its doors. Let's work together as a community to bring in, bring it back and make this town the arts district. We want to entice others to love our town as we do. Thank you. town the arts district. We want to entice others to love our town as we do. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? So we'll conclude public comment here. We do have a, excuse me, council member, or council meeting to conclude. Just a few comments. I want to thank everybody who came out to speak tonight. Definitely appreciate everybody exercising their First Amendment right to come out and express their feelings. I think it's great that you showed support to the State Theater. Appreciate a lot of the positive comments that folks said about the city of Havertie Grace as well. I first met Jared and Katie probably about five years ago through a mutual friend, Perry Stewart, who really wanted to get the doors of the State Theater opened. I agree with every comment that everybody ever made about the State Theater. I remember, I saw the best Johnny Cash impersonator I ever saw, and Jared still will never give us the contact information. He lived in Tennessee, but he was really good. The Rocky Horror Picture Shows that we would see at the State Theater. And I saw a movie there in Jeremy 2021. It changed my life. It was called Water of Life. It was a movie made about single malt scotch. And I know that everyone's comments about Katie and Jared, true, they're very kind people, and they help people in the community. And that's all true. And the State Theater has been an asset to the city of Havertie Grace. And if anybody stays long enough or tunes in long enough to listen to a lot of my comments at end of council meetings, often when I talk about the Performing Arts Centers of the city of Havertie Grace, I mentioned the three performing arts centers. However, there's a business side to being mayor. There's a business side to the administration as well. I wish, you know, I wish I could jump off the stage and high five some of the speakers. I agree with you 100%. And, but everyone on this diocese, not just the council members, myself, but even the directors, they had to take an oath to uphold the law. And I know there's a lot of confusion in, in some of the folks that spoke. I know you wanted to speak to support the State Theater, and I know some folks are looking for more clarity that how, how do we get here? How do we get to the point that the doors of the State Theater are shut down? And so Dr. Ritchie, my Director of Administration, is usually the point man that deals with businesses, contracts, leases, code compliance, as well as Jeff Goines, my Director of Planning. But I think, at this point, a lot of the city's integrity and how we operate has been questioned in public. And I asked Dr. Ritchie to say a few words on how we got here with the timeline, to assure the citizens, not just in the audience, but the citizens at home, how we got here, and perhaps end his comments with a way to get the doors back open on the State Theater. Dr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor Martin, Council President, Council Members, colleagues, most importantly, citizens. So my comments this evening, I'm gonna attempt to address some misinformation, some misdirection, and some confusion that has been spread into the community, and some of which that we have heard here this evening. So firstly, I want to clearly state, and I want to state clearly and unequivocally that the city administration is concerned with two things when it comes to the State Theater. One, that the building meets all of the requisite code requirements. And two, that the patrons of the establishment are safe. So I'm going in to read into the record two letters that I sent to Mr. Noe the past several weeks. These are letters Mr. Noe has, for whatever reason, not shared with the same veracity that he has shared the State Theater letter. However, they will provide the public some valuable perspective, as they explicitly state the reasons the State Theater does not have a use and occupancy permit. The first letter was dated June 17th, 2025. Mr. Noe, "The city of Havertie Grace has been working in good faith with you since November of 2018, in an effort to have the State Theater meet all requirements for operation, including compliance with fire code. The permit number 2019-0173 for suited for production office recording studio theater was originally applied for on November 13th, 2018. Although the original permit sought approval for the second floor office only, the county would not review the property unless the entire building was brought into compliance with the applicable building and fire safety codes. As of June 17th, 2025, some of the code compliance items have been completed as set forth below. Stairs and landings, per the Fire Marshal report, confirmed as completed by City Inspector, February 27th, 2020. Electrical permit EC-005288-2023 for 200 amp/240 volt service replacement. Final inspection dated January 22nd, 2025. Electrical permit EC-005285-2023 for code compliance of 600 amp service line side wires. Final inspection dated 4/24/2024. Electrical permit EC-002093-2020 for low voltage fire alarm system. Final inspection dated 3/4/2020. Since 2018, the city has extended you multiple opportunities to comply with applicable code provisions, while affording you the ability to keep the State Theater doors open. Yet, the State Theater is still not in compliance with city and county code. To date, the following items have not been completed. The permit number MC-004-004172-2022 for HVAC rough-in and final inspection for replacement of two five-ton heat pump units. No inspections are on file. This is a violation of City Code subsection 31-5, section 105 dot 5 dot 2. The Fire Marshal required that a sprinkler system be installed, which required a four-inch city meter. Despite being required, you have not yet picked up the meter from DPW shop for installation, as requested by the city. A final use and occupancy permit cannot be issued until these final two items receive approval, since the State Theater does not meet minimum building and fire code safety standards. Regrettably, due to your continued non-compliance, the city will not issue any more temporary use and occupancy permits. You will have 14 calendar days from the date of this letter, which is July 1st, 2025, to complete the aforementioned outstanding work and, and obtain all required inspections. Failure to complete the work within the timeframe requested will result in a municipal citation, fines, and legal action for abatement. This is an unfortunate, yet necessary step the city must now take. You have 30 days from, or you have 30 days to appeal this administrative decision to the city's Board of Appeals, as provided by city code. Sincerely, Christopher Ritchie, Director of Administration. July 2nd, 2025. Mr. Noe, "This letter is to follow up with the June 17th, 2025 letter I sent you via email and certified mail regarding State Theater code violations. The city has been working with you in good faith since November of 2018, in an effort to have the State Theater meet all requirements for operation, including compliance with the fire code. The letter outlined the outstanding city and county code compliance items that have yet to be completed by you, which include the following. The permit number MC-004-004172-2922 for HVAC rough-in and final inspection for replacement of two five-ton heat pump units. No inspections are on file. This is a violation of City Code subsection 31-5, section 105 dot 5 dot 2. The Fire Marshal required that a sprinkler system be installed, which required a four-inch city meter. Despite being required, you have not yet picked up the meter from the DPW shop for installation, as requested by the city. Furthermore, the letter stated that a final use and occupancy permit cannot be issued until these two items receive approval, since the State Theater does not meet minimum building and fire code safety standards. You were provided with a deadline of close of business July 1, 2025, to complete the aforementioned outstanding work, and obtain all required inspections. The letter was clear that failure to complete the work by that date would result in a municipal citation, fines, and legal action for abatement. Regrettably, due to your inaction and continued non-compliance, the city will not issue any more temporary use and occupancy permits. Furthermore, all temporary use and occupancy permits issued in the past by the city of Havertie Grace for the property located at 325 St. John Street, Havertie Grace, Maryland, 21078, are hereby revoked. If you continue to operate the State Theater without a final use and occupancy permit, the city will have no choice but to pursue the aforementioned municipal citation, fines, and legal action. This is an unfortunate, yet necessary step that the city must now take. If you choose to comply with the two outstanding items, the city of Havertie Grace will issue a final use and occupancy at that time. Sincerely, Christopher Ritchie, Director of Administration." The reason we are at this point today is not because of the litany of information, misinformation, and misdirection proffered by the State Theater. We are here for one simple reason, because the business owner refuses to hire a plumber and install the water meter into the fire suppression system, a meter of which the city has had in its possession and has stood ready to hand-deliver to the business owner since January of this year. The letter made public by the State Theater has many pieces of misinformation and/or misdirection, which I will address here this evening. The misinformation and misdirection surrounding the purpose of the water meter must be addressed first. The State Theater's letter leads the reader to conclude that the only purpose of the water meter is so the city can build the business in an event of a fire and, and water is used. The letter states that the meter, quote, "would allow the city to build the State Theater for water usage should the sprinkler system ever need to be activated in an emergency," end quote. The statement is woefully misleading. People are drawing the wrong conclusions based on the letter's content. This has been demonstrated as members of the public have proffered questions and assertions, both publicly and to the city council. What the State Theater's letter fails to disclose is that without the water meter, the entire fire suppression system is inoperable. The water meter contains the length of water pipe that connects the water main lateral line to the sprinkler system. Without the water meter connecting the main to the fire suppression system, no water is able to be supplied in the event of a fire. It is my understanding that the sprinkler system is currently inoperable and has been since the day it was installed because of this. The inoperable fire suppression system is a fire hazard that has gone on for far too long, and it must stop." The timeline proffered in the letter begins in December of 2021. In truth, this journey began nearly three years before that, in November of 2018. On November 13th, 2018, suited for Incorporated, the business that currently runs the State Theater, whose business owner is Mr. Jared Noe, applied for permit number 2019-0173. The city has been working in good faith with the State Theater for six and a half years, in an effort to help them remain open. That permit was submitted to Hartford County for plan review on November 14th, 2018. The original approval was to be for the second floor office use only. However, the county would not review it unless the entire building was brought into compliance. The business did not follow up with the county's review comments, and the application expired May 13th, 2019. A new permit was applied for with the county on June 5th, 2019, and issued on July 12th, 2019. The building failed the county inspection on January 22nd, 2020. No additional inspections were completed by the county. The Fire Marshal completed an inspection on January 24th, 2020, with the following findings. Second floor limited to business use only. No assembly occupancy. First floor house lighting must provide at least five-foot candles of illumination. No pyrotechnics of any kind. Rear exit lamps must have continuous handrails on both sides. Provide at least a 48-inch landing and handrail at both rear exit doors. Understage storage limited to non-combustible materials. Handrail and guards required on both sides of staged stairs. All stair doors must be at least one and three-quarter inch solid core." End quote. "Due to non-conforming exit components and lack of any fire-related assemblies, automatic sprinkler protection must be installed within 12 months of the date of this inspection," end quote. I would like to repeat that statement. "Due to non-conforming exit components and lack of any fire-related assemblies, automatic sprinkler protection must be installed within 12 months of the date of this inspection." Inspections by the city inspector were completed on February 6, 2020, and February 27th, 2020, to confirm completion of some items noted by the Fire Marshal. This excluded the sprinkler system. Fire Marshal reviewed the sprinkler plans in 2020. Due to COVID, the Fire Marshal approved extending the deadline for the installation of the sprinkler system. In an effort to help the business owner open its doors and generate revenue, the city began issuing monthly temporary use and occupancy approvals in January, February, and March of 2020. Conditions of those temporary use and occupancy approvals noted low voltage electrical for fire alarm system and HVAC work completed and inspected. Second story was limited to 22 occupants. An event assembly was not permitted. In the basement, for cold prep only. No additional temporary use and occupancy permits were issued until January 2022. However, importantly, the city allowed the business to continue to operate. The city issued temporary use and occupancy permits sporadically through 2022, 2023, and 2024. The city continuously required completion of HVAC work, a timeline for sprinkler installation, and fire watch logs. The fire watch logs were to be submitted by Mr. Noe to the city on a monthly basis. The city only received them sporadically or not at all. The State Theater letter asserts that in April of 2022, the former Director of Administration threw out Mr. Noe's bid for the Havertie Grace Concert Lighting RFP. In reality, Mr. Noe received a letter from the city's procurement officer notifying him in clear terms why his bid was rejected. I will quote directly from that letter for the reasons why Mr. Noe's bid was rejected by the procurement officer. Bid was received after the 2:00 PM deadline on Monday, April 11th, 2022. Bid did not include the detailed equipment list which was provided as a requirement. Bid did not include a, quote, "hog programmer with an hourly rate as requested. Bid submitted from a company which was not allowed to participate in federal, Maryland, or Hartford County solicitations due to not being in good standing. Bid referenced a different company which did not participate in the mandatory pre-bid meeting, nor did partnering company communicate with the city in regards to the project in any way during, prior to the bid due date." As you see, Mr. Noe's bid was not thrown out by the former Director of Administration. His bid was disqualified by the procurement officer for valid and tangible reasons. The State Theater letter states that in 2023, quote, "The city begins tacking on additional costs and work requirements to the project. The $100,000 quote from the sprinkler contractors remains unchanged, but the city's original out-of-pocket estimate for the state jumps from $37,000 to over $90,000, nearly three times the city's original estimate at the time the grant application was submitted. These late adjustments by the city bring the total project cost close to $200,000, almost doubling the original estimate," end quote. This misleading statement has caused members of the public to assume that the city did a bait and switch, so to speak, tripling the costs of work to the state. tripling the costs of work to the State Theater arbitrarily. A city council member received the following question after someone read these statements by the State Theater. Quote, "The original estimate was twenty K to hook it up, but now it's forty K?" Question mark. "How and why did that double?" Question mark, end quote. I wish to be very clear on this point. None of the costs for the installation of the sprinkler system and meter are set by or are in control of the city. The city simply does not perform this kind of work. The city has not done any work on the State Theater sprinkler system and has not charged them for any work on the sprinkler system. The business owner is asserting that costs have tripled. If they did, that is beyond the control of the city administration. Private plumbing and construction contractors are who perform the sprinkler installation, connection to the city's water system, and installation of the water meter, not the City of Haverty Grace. The only role the city has in the sprinkler system is the purchase of the water meter itself. This is to ensure the correct meter is purchased. The cost of the meter is a pass-through to the business owner. One hundred percent of the cost of the State Theater meter was covered by a grant of which the city helped the business owner apply for. It is the business owner's responsibility to solicit bids and hire contractors to do the work, not the City of Haverty Grace. The city has no control over what contractors charge for parts and labor. As you now see, the way the letter is written is misleading. The letter goes on to assert that in January of twenty twenty four, the city still had not released the grant funding. What the letter doesn't tell the public is that while the grant funds became available on March thirty-first of twenty twenty three, it was a reimbursable grant, which means the State Theater would need to hire a contractor to complete the work, pay the invoice, and submit the paid invoices to the State of Maryland for reimbursement. However, the city, in an effort to work with Mr. Noe, solicited approval from the state to receive the grant funds in advance so the contractors could be paid directly from the City of Haverty Grace. This partnership with the city alleviated the need for the State Theater to generate the funds themselves to pay the contractor and then wait to be reimbursed by the State of Maryland. The city put this commitment in writing and entered into an M O U. with Mr. Noe, which spelled out this relationship on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, of which Mr. Noe did not sign until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. As you see, the city became involved with administering the grant in an effort to reduce the burden on this business owner. But the letter leaves these important details out. The M O U. between Mr. Noe and the City of Haverty Grace clearly stated that no disbursement of grant funds will occur until, quote, "the permit and permit fees, including the capital cost recovery fee, have been paid in full to the city," end quote. The city did not receive that payment from Mr. Noe until January fourth of twenty twenty four. The funds were released indeed a full year after the grant was awarded. However, it was not because the city was withholding them, but because Mr. Noe took a year to pay the fees he was required to pay in order for the grant funds to be released. As you see, the delay was on the business owner, not the city. Water capital cost recovery fees were paid by Mr. Noe on January fifth, twenty twenty four, and the permit for the installation of the sprinkler system was processed that very same day. The invoices the city has for the work on the sprinkler system date back to as early as January eighteenth, twenty twenty four, which was paid by check by the city on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty four. It appears that based on the dates of the invoices, the contractors were paid by the city in a timely fashion. The letter attempts to establish a timeline, claiming that the actions of the city administration are retaliatory against the, quote, "business owner who simply exercised his First Amendment rights," end quote. The simple truth is that Mr. Noe exercises his First Amendment rights so frequently that any action taken by the administration would be in close proximity to one of his criticisms of the mayor, administration, city staff, et cetera. I want to be clear. None, not a single action this administration has taken regarding the State Theater has been or will ever be retaliatory for someone exercising the First Amendment. It is important to understand, and apparently what the State Theater fails to understand, is that the only reason the State Theater received any temporary use and occupancy permits and extensions are because Mayor Martin approved them. Furthermore, the grant wouldn't have been written, and the State Theater would not have received a hundred thousand dollars in grant funding if Mayor Martin had not approved it. The narrative the State Theater is purporting about the mayor being retaliatory or heavy-handed is false. The actions by the administration are lawful and in direct response to the business owner's outright refusal to comply with city and county code. We would not be here today, and the public outrage which we have heard here this evening would have never occurred if at some point in the last six months, Mr. Noe would have simply hired a plumber to install the water meter, a water meter that he has not had to pay one penny for, and the city has been ready to hand deliver to him at any time for the past six months. To be clear, the only things standing in the way of the State Theater receiving a final use and occupancy permit are the permit number M C dash zero zero four dash zero zero four one seven two dash two nine two two for HVAC roughen and final inspection for replacement of two five-ton heat pump units. Supposedly, this work has been completed. If so, the only thing that remains for Mr. Noe to do is to call the county and have them inspect it. The Fire Marshal required that a sprinkler system be installed, which required a four-inch city meter. Despite being required, Mr. Noe has not yet picked up the meter from the D P W. shop or requested the city to deliver it. It was made explicitly clear to Mr. Noe in the last sentence of the June seventeenth letter that I sent him that he has, quote, "thirty days to appeal this administrative decision to the city's Board of Appeals as provided by city code." Mr. Noe knows the Board of Appeals is the legal body to appeal the decision to. However, to my knowledge, he has not submitted such appeal. In the letter I sent to Mr. Noe in July second, the last sentence was, quote, "If you choose to comply with the two outstanding items, the City of Haverty Grace will issue a final use and occupancy at that time," end quote. Please note that the statement is "will" issue, not "may" issue, not "shall" issue, but "will." It has been made clear to Mr. Noe that the completion of these two items are the only things that stand in the way of his business being operational. Instead of following the appropriate appeal process or simply hiring a plumber to install the meter, the State Theater has chosen to pursue a path of spreading misinformation and misdirection in an attempt to paint them as the victim of a tyrannical government. This posturing of the State Theater could not be farther from the truth. If the City of Haverty Grace is guilty of anything, it is giving this business too much time to comply with codes. Codes that the city had every right to require to be complied with in full before ever allowing the State Theater to open their doors all those years ago. But the city chose to work with this business in an attempt to help them open their doors, operate, and generate revenue. I wish to offer my colleagues some encouragement and perspective regarding the backlash, misinformation, and conspiracy theories that are swirling at the present. Whatever we are experiencing today, tomorrow, or the next day, pales in comparison to the public outcry and outrage that we will experience if, God forbid, a fire were to break out in the building and loss of property, or worse, loss of life occurs if the fire suppression in the State Theater is inoperable. I stand with you in your resolve, and I commit to all of the citizens of Haverty Grace that the city administration is doing and will continue to do the right thing for the right reasons. I thank you for your time, and this concludes my comments.
Dr. Ritchie, thank you very much for the timeline and spelling out the requirements to get the doors of the State Theater open again. At this time, it's nine forty-seven. My colleagues up here have been waiting for, well, almost three hours out of bathroom break. Quick recess, council? We're gonna take a five-minute recess, and we'll conclude our business. Thank you. Thank you. Everybody's welcome to stay and have a seat, or we've got to leave, that's okay, but we're going to finish tonight's meeting. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to, okay, we're re-assembling our meeting. The time is now ten oh-six. Item number eight, recognitions. This evening, we have no recognitions. Item nine, proclamations. We have no proclamations. Item ten, presentations. We have no presentations. Item eleven, resolutions. We have no resolutions. Item twelve, ordinances. We have no ordinances. See how quick these council meetings go? Item thirteen, old business. We have no old business, which takes us to item fourteen, new business, and we have a special event. Dr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, for your consideration, this evening, we have one event, OPAC Neighbors Night Out, on August fifth, two thousand twenty-five, from six P.M. to eight P.M., on Ontario Street, between North Adams Street and North Stokes Street. And the more detailed information is in your agenda packet. Thank you.
Counsel, I have a motion to approve OPAC Neighbors Night Out. Motion by Council President.
Did he motion already? Did he move? Yeah, then I seconded.
Second? Okay, second, thank you. Motion by Council President, seconded by Councilmember Booker. This is a motion to approve OPAC Neighbors Night Out for August fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Questions or comments? Yes.
Have they asked for a, or do we need to offer to them a rain date? Justin?
I honestly don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I don't believe they've asked for one.
Typically, for National Night Out, there is no rain date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. OPAC Neighbors Night Out for August fifth, two thousand twenty-five is approved. Thank you. We're going to go to item fifteen, Director's Reports. Dr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, colleagues, citizens that are still with us. Do thank you for your attention this evening to my comments earlier. I will be brief at this point. I would just like to thank all of the volunteers and city staff that worked so hard to make such a special and spectacular Independence Day celebration on Saturday. It was wonderful, it was exhausting, it was a perfect day, and thank you all for everything that you did to make it so special. That concludes my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ritchie. Good evening, Mr. Goins, our Director of Planning.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I just want to notify everyone about the July seventeenth Planning Commission meeting. We have one item on the agenda. It's the site plan for the Sheets Gas Station at sixteen oh-nine Pluska Highway. And then, obviously, we have our fiscal year two thousand twenty-five report regarding building permits. And so, for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, we had a hundred and seventy-three new residential units constructed and three commercial, and that's an increase from a hundred and fifty-nine residential units last fiscal year, two thousand twenty-four, and then zero commercial permits. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goins. Anybody have any questions for Director of Planning? Okay, thank you very much, sir, we appreciate it. And good evening, Ms. Johnson, our Director of Tourism, Economic Development Tourism.
Good evening, Mayor Martin, council members, citizens in the audience and at home. My comments will be very brief tonight, basically because my colleagues have almost threatened me up here. They said my reports are the longest. So, we had a very successful First Fridays. Again, we got a lot of good feedback from the citizens and the businesses, so we were pleased with it. We also recruited two new volunteers to work at the visitor's center, so that's always very helpful. And they did that by participating in our events and coming to the downtown. They came into the visitor's center, they wanted to be more involved. We can always use more volunteers, so was very happy about that. And when you're downtown, this week, we have a new awning going up on the building at Washington Street. That awning was purchased by the owner of the building. We are a leasing, and it really looks beautiful. So, that really concludes my report this evening.
Thank you very much. Ms. Johnson, anybody have questions for the Director of Economic Development? Okay, thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Director of Finance.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers and residents of Haverty Grace. Last week is the start of our fiscal year, July first.
That's right, Happy New Year. I forgot the.
Happy New Year, Happy New Fiscal Year. We sent out the property tax bills last week. It was successful in terms of our billings. I'd like to thank our finance team for it, especially kudos to Stephanie Miller, who was responsible to generate those bills and send it out. And also, just in terms of setting up the budget for twenty-six, it was a team effort in terms of the finance team. Again, we're also, in two fiscal years, we'll have our financial audit start around August, which our financial auditors will show up on the third week of August. In terms of kind of financial conditions, I'll hold off until the next council session. But right now, I just want to wish everybody, you know, Happy New Year, and let's just fast start to the fiscal year. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Abdi. Any questions for our Director of Finance? Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Conway, our Director of DPW, good evening, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council, colleagues, guests, I just want to do a quick shout-out, like Mr. Ritchie did, to all the volunteers, staff, DPW, PD. I was in charge of a lot of the Fourth of July's for many years, and I hate to use this word, but it was, in my opinion, it was flawless. And being back in the saddle again made me realize how much I missed it, so it'll continue for me. So, just a quick shout-out. Guys did a great job, all the guys, gals, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Conway. Appreciate all the work from the DPW boys, men and women, I mean. So, sorry. Come on, it's ten o'clock. Any questions for Mr. Conway? Thank you, sir. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens. I'm kind of speaking the obvious here. We had an extremely busy weekend. So, it started on Friday with Farmer's Market and First Friday, and then Saturday, the Independence Day parade, celebration concerts, and then the fireworks. And all these events had a tremendous level of no parking, changed our normal traffic patterns, deployment of manpower. Every single person at the PD worked twelve hours at a minimum on Saturday. Every single person in the department worked. And I'm extremely proud of them, and I want to thank our partners at DPW. They were tremendous. Every time we called, they stepped up, and so, kudos to them on a job well done. And our partners, so we had deputies from the Harford County Sheriff's Office, we had officers from the Maryland Transportation Authority, officers from the Maryland Natural Resources Police, and all that culminates in at the, you know, the evening for the fireworks. And so, but I guess one of the most important things that I want to say is that I appreciate our residents, the patience and the, you know, just understanding that all of our residents deal with because of, you know, the disruption to all of it, and they take it all in stride. And anyway, so that's an important thing for us to say, you know, thanks for not yelling at us, because, you know, it's a hot day out there, some, you know, crazy stuff could happen. Anyway, so, again, speaking of long days, there's been enough so much to shout out, so thank you.
I love it. Thank you so much, Chief. I appreciate it, and, you know, great job the whole weekend. I mean, that's definitely, I know it's a strain on your resources and all the men and women, but we did it. It's the biggest weekend of the year, you know what I mean? It's our city's weekend, you know? So, thank you. Any questions for the chief? Thank you. We're going to go to business from the council. We'll start with Councilmember Boyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to just jump on the bandwagon with the kudos to everybody. Mayor, please extend our most appreciative thanks to your wife and her committee for just absolutely amazing celebration. She just, time and time again, she outperforms a hundred and twenty different entrants. I mean, that's not easy, trying to get people to show up and organize them and make sure that it's a smooth, respectful display of our city and making everybody want to move here. I.
I want to thank, well, I want to thank you and your husband for volunteering also. I know you're out there all day and night here too, so thank you very much.
It's probably one of the more fun things that I volunteer for, so thank you very much. So, everything from the fireworks, to the parade, to First Fridays, and then finalizing it with the Maryland National Guard band. I know a couple of us were out there. It was just a great, it just makes. was just a great, it just makes, it's just a wonderful thing for our town. And I want to plug in again, and we say it all the time, that we can't do cool things in this community if it weren't for the volunteers. And I just want to thank everyone who volunteered, whether purposely volunteering or just stepped up and just picked step off the ground just to make sure their city looked good or decorated their houses. Thank you all for just going the extra step for Haverty Grace and making it a great experience. I want to let you know what happened. My next-door neighbors, where I live, generally after the fireworks, it could take two hours for cars to get through, just because it takes a little while. Well, one of my neighbors decided that this year they're going to do it differently, and they did a dance party. And then, all the cars going by, they were getting them to dance, and they just made it more interesting as people were waiting to go by our houses. So expect on Washington next year to be even a bigger dance party. And I just want to close my comments by extending prayers to our former Councilman Joe Kay and his family. I just want to let them know that they're in our hearts and our minds and just wish, best wishes and just hope everything works out okay. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Boyer. Thank you. Good evening, Councilmember Schenegas.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Administration, citizens in the audience and at home. It is lovely to hear everyone had such a great time this Fifth of July week. It's been fabulous. We have such a wonderful community. The week started off with being able to attend the opening, the grand opening of the Luckiest Light. They have a lovely art studio and gallery for, to help people come out and make art and share kindness and include everyone in the process. So there's been so many artists donating. There's been artists donating time, donating their paintings, and just coming in and sharing smiles and love. And it's a great place, so stop on in and share some of your interest in art and come and look at the beautiful paintings that are on the wall for sale. And part of the proceeds go to the artists themselves. And back to the Luckiest Light. It is a wonderful community project, and I thank the families and the community for coming together and making it happen. I wish you all a wonderful week, and prayers go out to the families that are suffering right now in Texas. I can't imagine that we would ever be in this place, but I have read stories from the past. Haverty Grace, Bob Lackey's stories, that there's been floods. So we're very fortunate, but we should always count our lucky stars and just be thankful. And again, prayers go out. I wish you all a wonderful week, and I will see you again in two weeks. And I hope that you enjoy the rest of this July weather. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Schenegas, and good evening, Councilmember Booker.
Oh, I'm up. Hey, so thanks, Mayor Martin, directors, the citizens who are still with us today. I see a couple of business owners out there. I see Adidas Treasures and Washington Street Books and Music, Jonathan Savage and Anita. Hey, thanks for sticking with us tonight, as well as the rest of the citizens. So on a business note, I kind of want to say that we did do a ribbon-cutting. Was it the Third of July? On Three July, we were down, some council members and so forth were in strong representation. Ms. Bridget Johnson from Director of Tourism Economic Development Tourism was actually there on-site as well, as well as some other dignitaries. But the really important thing on the Third of July was cutting the ribbon for Marty's Soul Food, was to see all the different family members that are out there in full support and to see the citizens out there in full support. And I think that's really, it really helps out a lot to see the city band together, to kind of stand with shoulder-to-shoulder with other businesses here and other business communities. So I want to appreciate, I definitely appreciate that. Dr. Ritchie, I really appreciate your comments tonight. I realize that that is not something easy to do, is to put something succinct together as what you did tonight. And thanks for the great way in which you opine the situation. So I appreciate that. Thank you for that. Also, want to publicly thank the Independence Day Celebration, Independence Day Commission for another flawless execution. It's not an easy task by any means. You can see by the, I think someone said earlier, the pink skin and the sweat glistening off of our bodies out there. But it's just passion. And you can't, you can't see that kind of passion anywhere. And I lived in several different places, being an Army guy, lived a lot of different places, but the passion is there. Yeah, I know you're tired, but who else is going to do it? We're going to do it. We're going to go and celebrate our independence. We don't really care what comes in our way. We're going to exercise the freedoms of speech, freedoms of expression, and we're going to go ahead and do the things that we said we're going to do. We're going to honor those red, white, and blue colors up there that you see hanging above my head. So I really, my hat's off. This Wednesday, we're going to have a volunteer appreciation, if I'm not mistaken, upon the Garrett Land, the community center. So I urge the Council to show up, everyone to show up there at the community center and actually think, personally thank and shake their hands at some of those volunteers, because you will see those same individuals again next year, right? So we hope, right? Let's see, I think there's probably, you know, you can't do any of this without thanking the DPW. The guys were out there spot-on when there was a phone call made. They were Johnny on the spot, those guys. Director Conway, please just extend our gratitude, if you would, please. I appreciate that. The police were a little slow to respond. No, I'm just kidding. The police were on it. They were just incredible. I think the entire force was out there. So that was great. The presence was there, not a single incident. And that's just due to just, you know, just the presence of, you know, just, and that's what we wanted, we wanted a calm celebration. A lot of booms we wanted to hear is, of course, from the fireworks on that evening, right? So, but again, I want to thank the DPW, the police, and our first responders, our EMS crew that's out there, right, and our Susquehanna Host Company, as I always do. Mayor, that's all I have. I'll wrap up.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Booker. Appreciate your comments. And good evening, Councilmember Ellis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and departments. I appreciate you guys and citizens. I appreciate you guys still being here and being online.
Sorry. Mayor, Council, Department, citizens here and at home, I appreciate you guys still following along and watching. A lot of you guys already know, but the fireworks were the first time that I came to Haverty Grace. And frankly, it changed the whole trajectory of my life. So I want to appreciate everything that you guys do, and I can't, I can't help but think that that same thing might have happened for somebody this weekend. And we never know the ripple effect that that may cause for the city of Haverty Grace especially. I had a great time. It was, it was very exciting to be on the other side of some things this year. So that was exciting. I do want to shout out, there was an event on Sunday at the Virgin Donuts, and the weekend was extremely busy, and we all know that. And I want to thank the police department for showing up and getting under the dunk booth and got the kids to throw some water and dunk them and splash them. And I offered to get under there as well, but the kids did not care about a council member, so. But the police showed up, and that, and that meant a lot to me. I watched Sergeant Dan Pets go through his whole vest and show the kids and let them hold the handcuffs and show them what everything was. And I think it's extremely important to build that gap. And I appreciate, I appreciate Haverty Grace being a place that we can do that comfortably. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ellis. Appreciate your comments. And we're going to go, comments from Councilmember Jones.
Great. Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. Just a few short words. One, I echo Councilman Booker's comments about Marty's Grill, their grand opening. I thought it was a great showing from the community to see a new business thriving. And I thought the mayor had some great words to say for the business as well. We have, and on August ninth, I just wanted to remind folks to get your tickets for the Haverty Grace Colors Schools Jazz Festival. I think that's the next big thing that's happening in the city, and it's always a great time for that. I was not able to, Matt was talking about, sorry, Councilwoman Ellis was talking about fireworks, and I was not able to be downtown because I had family in town from South Carolina. But I did get to see the fireworks up the hill, and it was a great time. And then, lastly, I want to say how, being in the parade, maybe you don't think about all the time how much time and effort goes into it, but it's obvious that our parade is huge, and it's a layer of love for Taryn Martin and also for the Independence Day Commission. So I just wanted to thank her and her team for all the efforts and the dedication to making it the best parade possible. And also, it couldn't have been done without DPW officers, fire, and all of the volunteers. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jones. Good evening, Councilmember, or Council President.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Council President now, aren't you?
Yeah, that's right. It's only been three years. Mr. Mayor, Counsel, citizens all, thank you so much. You know, there's a lot of passion here tonight, a lot of misdirected passion, but, you know, First Amendment, you have the right to petition your government for redress of grievances, and I'm glad that our citizens know how to use that. So, with that said, on the twenty-eighth, I got a chance, my wife and I went to the Juneteenth celebration for Deer Creek Prince Holmes Sonic Lodge. And for some reason, they gave me a recognition for my support. I'll hang on my wall. Just got home from scout camp with the boy, had a good time. It was kind of hot, but we had some torrential flooding up there. The camps are like Rising Sun area, Camp Horseshoe, and we had some torrential flooding on Tuesday, so the pool was shut down, all kinds of mud. Spent a lot of time volunteering on Wednesday and Thursday to clean up the camp. But I want to point out that the boy and I, we were with another one of my scouts, we won the inter-t troop shoot, which, you know, you have one adult and two kids, they shoot shotgun or rifle, and we just hammered everybody else with perfect scores. So congratulations to Matt and Timmy. Right before I left for camp, I did help Braden Harvey button up his Eagle Scout project over on Joe Kay Trail. We put some benches in there. And then tomorrow, I'm sorry, Wednesday, I'm helping Josh Shirley from the troop in Rising Sun, I think that was from. But he's building benches on the Clark Road Trail, which is part of the Lower Susquehanna Heritage Greenway. So we'll be out there knocking out some more projects. And what's cool about this is, Dr. Ritchie and I worked on this when we were on the Wage and Benefits. We find small little things around town that our DPW staff would have to do. You have to repair benches, or you have to clean paths, or do whatever, stuff like that. And, you know, we're making them into Eagle Scout projects, and we're saving the city a lot of money that way, because we're not sending our employees out for a day, or a couple employees out for a day, and the materials and everything else, this is all taken care of. Might take a little while longer, but we're able to save the city some money with stuff like that. But so I want to send a huge shout-out to Taryn Martin and the entire Independence Day Committee, the city staff, and all the volunteers. Chief, Joe, everybody, just, it was a fabulous day on Saturday. I was super tired. I just got home from scout camp about an hour before the parade, and I was just absolutely beat tired, but I got to drive the trolley and meet the Lieutenant Governor again. And it was a great trolley, a great parade. And the city people came out in force. So thank you so much for, one thing I really like, I do a lot of parades, and I know I'm rambling. Haverty Grace people are just so nice, and it's so nice to be in a parade in Haverty Grace, because people stay back, and it's got wide streets. I always complain every year about having to do the parade in Catonsville, because people will be fifteen feet into the road every year. And it's always so hard to do a parade there. And Haverty Grace people are well behaved, and it's a great parade. And just, kudos, good job. And that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council President. We're going to go to the last item of business from the mayor's office. So I do have a few things to cover here, a couple announcements to make. But I guess I'll start with the announcements to make. So the Achilles heel that I have been dealing with in the last ten years is how do we, how do we, as Haverty Grace, the city Haverty Grace, welcome businesses and development at the same time and enforce our laws? And what I mean by that is, you know, sometimes people get very excited to come into City Haverty Grace and build things, or put an addition on their house, or open a business. Then they start getting slapped with a lot of different permits and laws and licenses, regulations. Some of them are ours, some of them aren't. It might be the state or county. Inspections, you know, the food, you know, health department. I mean, it goes on, it's like, and by the time you get to the ribbon-cutting, you know, you just look at the business owner, and they just look like they've been through ten rounds of Mike Tyson. I mean, it's like, and so, I kept thinking to myself, it's very hard to get your hands around this perception. And it seems like more and more people have been telling me, very politely, but telling me Haverty Grace has a reputation of not being business-friendly, which couldn't be any further from the desire of this administration. And that's why I keep saying it's like an Achilles heel. I can't get my hand around. I'm like, trying to figure out what, what is it about Haverty Grace that is difficult? I mean, what is our fault? What belongs to the state? What belongs to the county? So, you know, there's often, you know, a belief, if you want something, to die, send it to a committee, right? Well, in this case, I want something to work, and I'm trying to figure something out, and I need to go to the experts. And I'm going to form a committee by executive order. It's a temporary committee. It's a six-month committee. It's only got a few people on it. It's got people on it that I know have dealt with Haverty Grace almost all their lives, from developing, from real estate, to lending money as a banker, you know, bank president, to a former council member who knows every skeleton in our code, and how it got there, and who put it there. So this is going to be called, for lack of a better word, the Red Tape Committee, because we're going to try to get rid of some red tape. So the members are going to be Charlie Heiner, who everybody knows from BCH Realty, who's been selling homes in City Haverty Grace for many, many, many decades. Clark Turner, who's been building houses in the City of Haverty Grace for many, many decades. Jim Miller, who is a former Haverty Grace City Councilmember, who I served with on council for many years, who also knows the history of the city, the history of the zoning laws, the history of developments, the history of everything that got put into our book, our zoning laws to begin with. I've asked him to be on it. And Scott Elliott, who's the Vice President of Harford Bank, who has been the loan officer and working with a lot of businesses in Haverty Grace to try to get them up and started. And he knows also a lot of the loopholes, or, I'm sorry, the hurdles that had to be jumped. So this Red Tape Committee is going to meet for six months, meet at a minimum of twice a month, and they're going to report back to the city council, a report of recommendation, no later than the first meeting in January two thousand twenty-six. The scope of the, I'm not going to read the whole executive order, too. It's a lot of whereas's and stuff like that, but it's, the scope is to review the city code and review any relevant administrative policies and processes to identify sections or areas that are outdated, inefficient, ineffective, cumbersome, create an undue burden on citizens and/or businesses, overly restrictive, not considered business-friendly, or more stringent than the state or Maryland requirements. And this committee will be subject to the Open Meetings Act. Their meetings will be posted online when they meet. They will be soliciting comments from the public, and that'll be put out as a notice. And like I said, they'll be giving our council a report back by the first meeting in January. What council decides to do with that is up to the council. This is a mayor's committee, only because I'm trying to get my hand around something that I just, we've all been trying to figure out, what is it about the city that we just can't put our finger on that makes people think we're not business-friendly? So when council gets this information, council, the council president can disseminate it any way he wishes. The council can take action on all of it, none of it, some of it. It's just a committee. Now, the second committee, I should wear a bulletproof vest for this one. So about a month ago, a little more than a month ago, I got an email from a downtown businessperson. That was a pretty well-detailed email with a lot of data and quantitative facts that I thought was a depressive email. This business owner took time to write it. And it was, it was a suggestion that said, is anybody talking about closing down the one hundred, two hundred block of Washington Street for like a pedestrian mall, or, you know, make it like a shopping mall? And of course, you know, my initial thought was, you know, that would go over like Breaking Wind in Church. You know, I mean, that'd be a, I'm not going to go that path, because, you know, we were just on the finish line getting this. you know, we were just on the finish line getting this street done. And then I had another business owner say something to me, just consequently, and then it was a total of five business owners in that area that have reached out to me and talked to me with suggestions. None of them are trying to throw it down my throat, but they, they wanted to talk about it. These are businesses that I respect. Earlier this evening, a gentleman spoke and said, only two people support us, so maybe he got those people to change their mind, I don't know. But to me, it was enough businesses to get me to think about it. So what do you do? You know, what do you do? I mean, first of all, I know there's a lot of citizens out there, a lot of citizens that have told me, any talk about keeping the roads closed? And, you know, I mean, I get it, you know, it's a citizen's town, it's a citizen's streets, it's a public street, you know, but the people who's got skin in the game are the businesses that own the businesses, or the business people that own the businesses. And so I listen to citizens, because we did this project for the citizens. But the businesses were the ones I was concerned about. So when people come to you with rational arguments, rational ideas, you know, one, two, three, but five good ideas, and then, you know, I started talking to my tourism manager, my economic development department, and they also said, yeah, there's some people have been talking about it. So as mayor, I'm going to form a committee. It's a very temporary committee. This committee is going to report back September 1st. Okay, so it's just going to meet through July and August, and they're going to solicit ideas and input from businesses, the public, the chamber, wherever it comes from, and their idea is to report back to the mayor and council that this is not a good idea, and we shall not open streets, but they're going to report back that this might be something you may want to experiment with, maybe permanent, maybe temporary basis. I want everyone to know that, you know, I know some people spoke tonight because word got out that we were going to do this, and, you know, that's fine. I mean, come and speak. I want everyone to realize it's a committee, and the committee is looking for input. The committee will be holding public hearings. I fully anticipate this committee to sit up on this dais and will be advertising public evenings where the public can come in, hopefully politely, share their reasons why we should open the streets, or reasons why we should close the streets. It could look like a lot of different things. Maybe the, maybe the only thing that comes out of this is maybe, you know, you make Pennington One Way from Union to St. John's, I don't know. I mean, like, things could come out of this, maybe close on the weekends only, maybe a one-year resolution that expires and everybody comes back and revisits it. Maybe, you know, streets are closed down, you know, for one year, but, you know, deliveries every day up until 11 o'clock, you know, because, you know, deliveries could be a big deal with business, stuff like that. Like, it could look like a lot of different things. I expect this committee to do their homework. I expect this committee to make a couple trips to some areas where it's work, maybe not work. If the committee needs more time, and the executive order I created gives them the ability to extend that time to report if they need to. But it could look like a lot of different things, but nonetheless, if you know me, you know that everything's on the table, that everything is a possibility, everything we can talk about. You know, it's very well, they'll come back and say, no, we don't want to close. But also remember this, even if they say, come back and say we want to close, council can keep it open. If they say they want to open, council can close it. Like I say, ultimately, this is just a recommending committee, because at the end of the day, when you have educated people who have been here for a long time, who have legitimate arguments, they must be given their due process, and the due process is this temporary committee that I'm going to establish by executive order. Please know that this whole downtown restoration project has been an open, public process from the beginning, going all the way back to the charrettes, the multiple charrette sessions that we had with Tool Design, and all the citizens, over 300 citizens that participated in these three different sessions, that ultimately gave us this idea of what they wanted the streets to look like. So if these streets do get shut down, whether it's permanently, temporary, weekends, or not at all, it'll be a decision that is made collectively, not in a vacuum from City Hall. That's the one thing I promise you, okay? So when I sign these executive orders, the chairs of these committees, Ms. Lori Orzowitz, the tourism manager, will chair the Washington Street Committee. Mr. Adam Zinski will chair the Red Tape Committee. They will start putting their meeting dates together and posting their meeting dates, and that's when everybody can start sharing their information with the committee. So I will sign these executive orders, and they will take effect immediately. So one, the Washington Street Committee reports back September 1st, the Red Tape Committee reports back the first meeting in January, I think, January 7th. All right, now on to one other last topic, and I do have, we have that video ready, right? Okay, good, I got a good video to show you in a second. So I really, I thank my council members and my directors for the compliments given to the Independence Day Commission. They did a wonderful job, I mean, a hero's job, to tell you the truth. It's just a lot to do to carry out such a massive undertaking. And please know that this commission works all year round. They meet all year round, and my wife, Mrs. Martin's in the audience right now, and I can tell you, it's a year-round job, because it's not just a weekend of 4th of July. It's raising tens and tens of thousands of dollars throughout the year. So when you see things like the tree jubilee and things like that, like, you know, when you buy a cool-looking Christmas tree at the Star Center in the first weekend of December, 100% that money goes to things like the parade. So all the fundraising they do, the sponsorships, it's very important, you know, to sponsorship bags, and all the letters that go out with the applications, and all the vendor applications, and, you know, all the street assignments, and just putting all the parade entries in the right order, and so you don't have too many bands together, and you don't have a loud band next to like, you know, a little group of, you know, you know, Girl Scouts walking, trying to sell cookies or something like, it's just, everything has a lot of thought that goes through it. And even though the Independence Day Commission is an arm of the city of just a handful of people, on the Independence Day itself, if you saw the old, the folks walking around with yellow shirts, there's dozens and dozens of them, over 50. So every year, this is pulled off by volunteers. And that's not even the men and women of the Police Department, who basically say through the whole entire weekend, screw it, I'm not getting any sleep. You know, I mean, from First Fridays, you know, to the farmer's market, you know, to the parade, to the fireworks at night, they're out there doing their job. The men and women of Department of Public Works, I mean, all the moving of the cones and the saw horses that have to block traffic, stuff like that, the trash cans, everything to keep things moving, it is our weekend in Havertie Grace. You don't want to miss it. It's a great weekend. With that said, there's a story that a lot of people don't know. Ready for the story? Here, brother, okay. This is a cool story, and it's going to give you some tears in your eyes when you see this. A lot of people said, I noticed at the very beginning of the parade, there was a naval officer sitting on the back of a convertible up towards the front. A lot of people thought that was the Grand Marshal, but it wasn't. The Grand Marshal was Larry Strong from Little League, who was very deserved, and we were so proud of Larry Strong. But this lady had a story. Her name is Jordan Burns. She's a lieutenant in the United States Navy, stationed in Texas for a very, very long time, trying to make her way home. And her mother and father, who are both retired naval folks themselves, she knew that her mother and father were at the Vandiver. They rent the house right next to the Vandiver, and they always watched a parade right at the Vandiver. She was coming home from Texas and did not tell her mother and father. And she reached out to my wife, who runs the parade, a couple months ago, and said, and said the same story I just told you, and said, can you sneak me into parade so I can be in the parade and surprise my mom and dad? And so she did that. So the lady who was a naval officer, who everyone saw up, well, I don't think she finished the parade after the Vandiver, but she was in the parade up to the Vandiver, and so everyone that saw the naval officer was like, was like, well, who's, is that the Grand Marshal? I mean, it's like, so, anyway, we have a video, and the video you're about to see is her surprising her mother and father that did not know she was there. So please watch the video. In Havertie Grace, this is why we do this, right? The video can be found on the Independence Day Commission Facebook page, if anybody wants to look at it again or share it with any friends. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. I know it was a long meeting tonight, but a well-worth meeting, and we'll see you back here in the second, next meeting is the 21st of July. Have a motion to adjourn.
Let's all move.
Second.
Hold on, one second.
In like another hour is my wife's birthday. Can we sing her a happy birthday?
Sure, go ahead.
I make a motion that we sing Happy Birthday to Brenda Reesack.
(singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Brenda. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by the Council President. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to adjourn carries six to an affirmative. Time is now 10:48.